Could we please start with a roll call?
Mayor Coombs.
Present.
Councilmembers Bagley.
McGee.
Finley.
Here.
Levison.
Here.
Samore.
President.
Santos.
Whit.
Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Councilmember Santos.
Thank you, Mayor. If it's, and I feel it's appropriate, on the 11th anniversary of the commemorance of September 11th, I would like everyone to rise and take a moment of silence for a few seconds. That's okay?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The public invited to be heard. First person on the list is Forrest Fleming. You'll have three minutes to speak. Please state your name and address before you begin speaking.
My name is Forrest Fleming, 372 Main Street.
Okay. My name is Forrest Fleming, 372 Main Street. I am the Chair-Elect of the Chamber of Commerce, and Scott Cook and I are here to speak in favor of New Mark Merrill and the Mall Project.
Thank you. As Forrest said, I'm Scott Cook. I'm the Event and Program Director for the Chamber, and I'm at 528 Main Street. There was a letter that was in the paper yesterday, and so I've been asked by our President, Kathy Webber Harding, to read that for you. And then I've also given the letters to Sandy Cedar, so you should each have one there with you. But for decades, the southwest entrance to Longmont was a hive of shopping activity. In 2002, a total of $1,296,162 was collected by the city of Longmont in sales tax through the month of June. Four years later, in 2006, sales taxes collected through the month of June totaled $1,074,345. Today, the total sales tax collected in this area has fallen to a dismal total of $496,018 through June, a third of what it was 10 years ago. As the voice of business, the Chamber is very aware of the need to revitalize the signature area of our community. Since 2007, the Chamber has been actively engaged with the previous and current owners of the mall, city staff, and city elected officials. Chamber members and community members who all ask the same question: What do we do with the mall? Thousands of people have participated in efforts to revitalize the mall over the years. Studies have been done, and consultants have weighed in. All agree on one thing: Twin Peaks Mall must be redone to survive into the future. The current owner, New Mark Merrill, has been actively engaging the community for many months. Alan Ginsborg, Managing Director and Principal, has met with hundreds of people in an effort to ensure that the mall is redeveloped in a manner that is fitting to Longmont, while working within the realities that represent the retail industry today. We are fortunate that the new owner is working so diligently to provide a reasonable answer to the question: What do we do with the mall? In August, the Longmont Area Board of Directors invited Alan Ginsborg to attend a board meeting and update us on the plans for the mall. Following the discussion, the board unanimously voted to support New Mark Merrill and Alan Ginsborg with their plans for the redevelopment of the Twin Peaks Mall. We encourage everyone to support this effort by moving forward for the good of Longmont. And this is signed by Craig Chaney, the Chamber 2012 Chamber Chair, and Kathy Webber Harding, our President and CEO. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott and Forrest. Next up is Meg Alderton, followed by Henry Fabian.
Hello. My name is Meg Alderton. I am the Communications Manager for the Regional Air Quality Council. My address is 1445 Market Street in Denver. I'd first like to thank you all for your funding support of the RAC in past years, and also to thank me for having me today to, as you consider providing further funds for the RAC and the support of its activities in 2013. The RAC is requesting $11,000 from the city for 2013, the same amount provided by the city in 2012 and 2011. This would be to continue work toward our mission in three core areas. The first is to develop plans and programs to bring the region into compliance with federal air quality standards. The second, to reduce diesel emissions from trucks, buses, and off-road vehicles in the region. And the third is to assist local governments in implementing air quality improvement programs and practices. As you're likely aware, our region fell out of compliance with federal standards for ozone pollution in 2007. So through the activities we've just listed, we've worked with CBHE, local government partners, and other stakeholders to bring the region back into compliance. A critical component of our plan to bring the region into compliance is our Ozone Aware Program, an education and outreach program designed to inform the public about ground-level ozone pollution, its adverse health effects, and what the public can do to help reduce it. As you know, this program relies heavily on partnerships with local governments like Longmont to help us get the word out. And in fact, you may have seen one of our colorful Ozone Aware banners in the lobby of your civic building this summer, which provided tips on reducing ozone pollution. Additionally, we're continuing our work to reduce diesel fuel emissions through our Clean Air Fleets Program, which provides information on and funding for diesel retrofit technologies, GPS, and alternatively fueled vehicles to reduce emissions in public and private fleets. And the city of Longmont has actually participated in this program fairly recently, and was the beneficiary of $94,000 worth of improvements to its vehicle fleet, which included, in 2011, two hybrid retrofits, two bucket trucks, a new hybrid bucket truck, a new hybrid digger truck, or digger derrick, and 28 global positioning systems. Finally, we're excited to announce a couple of new items from which the city of Longmont may benefit. We've got an up-and-coming program offering significant funding for electric vehicles and electric vehicle infrastructure assistance, which will be rolling out towards the end of the year. And the second is the development of guidance related to air quality protection and improvement strategies for local governments, which will incorporate both print and web-based information and tools, and should be available in the next few months. I'd like to close just by saying that the critical report, support we've received from Longmont and other local governments has made all of these programs possible, and we're grateful for your continued partnership, and thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Meg. Henry Fabian?
Hi. I'm Henry Fabian. I reside at 604 Ryder Ridge Drive here in Longmont. I'm also a community member for the Longmont Community Justice Partnership, and that's the reason for my being here. And I'm most recently a board member. I've been a volunteer at LCJP for about two and a half years. I started as a community member, just like anybody would, and I was so impressed and excited by what I saw happening through the restorative practices that I became a facilitator earlier this year. The impact that LCJP makes in the community is real, and Deb Whistle, who's the Executive Director, is going to be providing some information packets to you today that have some statistics and other background information. There's a couple of things that I think are really important that speak to the impact of what we actually do in the community. If you look at the people that go through our program, the reoffensive recidivism rate is 10% or less in Longmont. When you compare that to people going through the criminal justice system on a national level, that's anywhere between 60 and 70%. Perhaps just as important is the fact that people that go through this process are either very satisfied or satisfied, meaning victims, offenders, community members, police officers. Everybody believes this thing works, and we have evidence that it does indeed. Part of our success also is through partnerships that we have in the community with important institutions like the Police Department. And Mike Butler has been a long-term supporter of LCJP, and he stated publicly that, you know, our work has significantly reduced the number of repeat offenders and contributes to a sense of security in our town. We also have relationships with the courts and the district attorney in particular, Stan Garnett, who's the Boulder County DA, and also a board member, has stated that we play a vital role in helping repair the harms to victims and giving offenders a second chance. We also are particularly good at helping juveniles understand the impact of their actions and assisting them to find alternatives to their criminal behavior. Last but not least is the schools, and we do a lot of important work with restorative practice through schools. And Don Haddad, who's the Superintendent of St. Rain Valley School Districts, has seen positive results within the schools, such that he has documented that in the 2010-2011 school year, there were 172 days of suspension and eight expulsions that were avoided. So clearly, the work that we do is impactful. There's a lot more statistics that speak to it. I invite all of you to come join us and become volunteers and see it for yourself. But at the very least, I would ask you to please support the funding request that Deb Whistle will put before you. Thank you.
Thank you, Henry. Priscilla Chacon?
Hello. My name is Priscilla Chacon. I'm a team member of Restorative Justice in Longmont High School, and I'm here to share with all you my story. I live 1467 Lincoln Circle. I was first referred to Restorative Justice last year when I hit a girl. I have been referred to by our school's officer because I had taken responsibility for what I had done, because it was the right thing to do. Before the circle, we had a pre-conference to discuss my assets. When we had finished, Laura, who manages Restorative Justice in schools, asked me if I was interested in joining the team and said that I could think about joining, and let her know. The day of the circle was really nerve-wracking. After I started, I felt more comfortable and safe. When the agreement phase came, I was ready to make the right choices. I was ready to make things right. What was in my agreement was 13 hours of community service, pay her medical bill, talk to a trusted adult in the school, and I chose my English teacher. And I also wrote a letter to her and her family. After talking to my English teacher, she encouraged me to go above and beyond the expectations. I had gone above and beyond by rewriting the letter to the girl and her family, making sure it was right for them. After completing my agreement, I decided to join the team because I wanted to set an example to others that we can all go beyond the expectations, that we can help others as well as gain hard work ethic, and to achieve our goals in ourselves and in the community. I know that the city of Longmont has supported Restorative Justice and LCJP, and we'd like to thank you for the support, and we hope that you keep supporting us because it's good for them. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Priscilla. Amy Stenson? Followed by Wendell Pickett.
Hello. I'm Amy Stenson. I'm the Community Restorative Justice Program Manager with the Longmont Community Justice Partnership, and I'm at 225 Kimbark Street. I would like to start my comments today with a few quotes. "The contract's more than satisfy anything I could have hoped for. The process was very emotional for me, but I really felt inspired by the boys' reaction to hearing my side of the story. I'm glad to have given those boys a second chance, and I really like that this approach shows a full circle to the crime. Well organized and provided great opportunities for the offender to see who was hurt by the situation. Good to put the human element back into the process. I was happy with the result. I loved the Police Department and how they handled the case. The police took time off and helped with the problem with me and the offender." These quotes are all taken from victims and supporters of victims between the ages of 12 and 50 who have participated in recent restorative justice processes within the Community Restorative Justice Program. These quotes and countless more speak to the success of the restorative justice process in engaging and empowering victims of crime in our community. These quotes also speak to the importance of the partnership that LCJP has with the Longmont Police Department. In 2011, 70% of all restorative justice processes held within the Community Restorative Justice Program included officer participation, 70%. And as of the end of August of this year, officers have participated in more than 80% of all RJ processes held through the Community Restorative Justice Program. In addition to officer referrals and attendance, LCJP has the privilege of working with six liaison officers who work to build and sustain the ongoing relationship between our organization and the Police Department. Utilizing a restorative justice process is a powerful tool that has proven to be successful in dealing with many crimes and conflicts within our community, in ways that are just and fair for all involved, in ways that create space for healing, and in ways that encourage positive family, neighborly, and community relationships. It's my pleasure and privilege to serve at LCJP as we work to create a safer Longmont for all, and I thank you for your time and ongoing support of Restorative Justice. Thank you.
Thank you, Amy. Wendell Pickett?
Wendell Pickett, 3813 Florentine Circle. And the first thing I'd like to do is thank you all. This is a discussion on parks fees, which began more than a year ago when I was first involved in the Mill Village project, and I appreciate that you guys are now taking into consideration staff's recommendation and parks. But I'd like to call your attention to a few things. By addressing this, you're assisting developers in the market to create more diverse housing product here in Longmont, to make us more competitive with our neighboring cities, so that we can attract jobs and residents. The Affordable Housing Task Force and Mill Village Apartments market studies both recognize that high-quality rentals are scarce in the city, and that what they've done is there's a shortage of those, which creates a lack of people being able to move up from lower-quality rentals, and those are then being kept occupied by people who could afford more, but there's no opportunity for them to go there. So there's a hole in the market that I'm being filled, and by addressing this fee, that's going to help to bring people to do that. Because the competing cities such as Brighton, Fort Collins, Loveland, and Broomfield, their rents average are about 15% higher than Longmont for a number of reasons, but the costs are similar. And my role as one of the developers at Mill Village, we brought in a lot of institutional people to look at final financing, and we're partway there to getting that done. They look at Longmont, and they don't understand it. They say it's not a university, it's not transatlantic, it's not a core of Denver. It's a very employment-based community, and they start looking at the employment base, and they've read what the summary in the papers are, and we've been very fortunate to net new jobs, but we've also had some volatility in the last year. So they really consider us an in-betweener, and what that does is forces them to really focus on costs. When they focus on costs with our slightly average lower rents, they want to see slightly average lower costs to maintain margins and to maintain some kind of safety there, and all costs are really scrutinized. Well, the cost of sticks and bricks are the same whether you're building in Broomfield or Loveland or Longmont. It's the cost of fees and developers and land. And land is less expensive here, developer fees are a little bit less, and by you reducing these fees, you're bringing the city more in line with being competitive. However, I would like you to look at choosing 3A instead of 2A. It's broader. It brings more developers into the picture. It addresses both multifamily and single-family reductions instead of just multifamily. By doing that, I think that you, you know, create more opportunities for more housing to be delivered. In addition, I'd like to recommend that you look at the Pocket Park. Pocket Park on 200 unit and above, that additional burden of having to build Pocket Parks can add anywhere 500 to more to a project, and that's an additional fee on top. I've got a package of information for you here that I'll leave.
Can you just give it to the clerk on the end? Thank you, Wendell. Kevin Melchon?
Thank you. I'm Kevin Melchon. I reside at 8583 Strawberry Lane. With me tonight is my business partner, Ken Spencer. I just wanted to make three quick points for you on the same issue, frankly. First, I did want to give, I've been for 25 years, alls I do is work financing local governments, and just in starting, I got to tell you, I have never met a staff that's more courteous, more professional, and frankly, more transparent in providing information Every time I've ever seen park fees, they've always been skewed where multifamily is a factor of a single-family, which would be one ERU, and then you'd have a lower factor for multifamily. So just from a fairness standpoint, what puts an impact on it? The population puts an impact on it, and I think every study shows that multifamily has a lower impact than single-family. But the other second issue I wanted to bring up was just an economic issue, which is, we're really at the margins here. Ken and I, our business in Longmont is, we own the old Schlegel farmhouse, I think you may know that, it's the yellow farmhouse that's adjacent to Silver Creek High School. It's a 10-acre PUD that you've had as a PUD for medium-to-high-density residential. And we were actually approached last year by some apartment developers out of the blue about building it. The fact is, a park's fee of $5,000 for a rental project, this city, the Nelson Road corridor, that's a dollar a foot market, and when you think about a $5,000 fee, that adds about $400 a year of cost to that unit. Frankly, for the developers that approached, just to kind of price the cost, kind of priced it off-market, so they couldn't charge a market rent project and make a pencil out. So we passed on that. We've been taking a look at some other alternatives, but my only point to you was that economically, we're at a margin on multifamily, and I think lowering the parks fees will frankly produce more revenues, because I think you'll see more projects get done. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Carol Manelli? I probably butchered your last name, but...
My name is Carol Manelli, and I'm with the Board of Directors of the Longmont Symphony Orchestra. And the first thing I'd like to do is thank the council very much for their support this past year, and hope that they'll seriously consider continuing that support. I'd like to point out a couple of things that might be interesting for the council this year for our planned concert season. We are teaming up with the Longmont Council for the Arts in presenting special guest John Fielder, the photographer, who will be at our November concert, and we're combining photography and music. The symphony will present the New World Symphony at that concert. And then at the end of our season in May, we have a pops concert, and this will be an evening on Broadway, and our special guest will be Keith Miller from the New York Metropolitan Opera, which ought to be very special to us. One of the things that the symphony tries to do and continues to do is to try to enhance our outreach programs that we offer to citizens within the community at large, and specifically with the Longmont School District and the students at those school districts. I would like to say also that we have a very tough job this year. We have been offered a matching grant challenge, and I'm delighted to say that through a lot of hard work and a lot of support from individuals in the community, we are just about reaching the halfway point. But we have a lot of work to do, and we need a lot of support from a lot of various directions in the community. Again, I'd like to thank you so much for your support and hope you will continue to support the Longmont Symphony. Thank you.
Thank you, Carol. Kiki Wallace? Followed by Strider Benson?
Hi, I'm Kiki Wallace, 1901 South Main Street, and I run the park that they cost $118,000 per acre for a park. And I developed land for residential units, cost me about $100,000 an acre for sanitary sewer, storm sewer, water, foam cable gas, sidewalks, curb and gutter, and asphalt. So I question why that number is so high. Also, the Pike neighborhood, which we are part of at Prospect, it was paid for, it was a special district created in the 80s, it was paid for by 1995. We are still contributing to the park system. The parks aren't coming to South Longmont, so it seems like we are subsidizing other parts of Longmont, so I question why it is up to us to subsidize the rest of Longmont. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Kiki. Strider Benson?
I'm Strider Benson, 951 West 17th. I'm kind of here to talk about Chicago's school strike and butterflies, just for a little break. Social justice, high school in Chicago, which is a key aspect of what's going on, Mayor Rahm Emanuel decided, together with others, to fire the principal of that school, and that was probably the primary provocation of the school strike, which is being strongly supported by the community. Some friends and colleagues of mine actually started the teachers' movement in 1987, and all of the propaganda against public unions has been, all this big bureaucratic monster, and all they do is protect jobs. Well, the grassroots movement changed that a few years ago in Chicago, and these are active, progressive teachers who work with the community, have created local school councils who work with the communities, and have, all of the best performing schools in the poorer neighborhoods in Chicago are the ones with these local school councils. So why was it decided to break and get rid of them? Well, Paul Ryan, the VP candidate, stated today, "I stand with Rahm Emanuel." Well, that's probably the first time he's ever said or done anything like that. Why so? Well, the game plan is to break the union and to destroy the public schools because the kids in these neighborhoods are not supposed to have a chance. They had three AP classes increased under the school council. They got rid of those classes and put in remedial classes. Their test scores have been improving, so you have to get rid of the principal. That is part of the game plan. On the entire country, there are sacrifice zones, like blowing up mountain tops in West Virginia, like this whole city of Camden, New Jersey, like the driving down of working class to essentially slavery conditions. That's what we're dealing with, with impunity and naked power without any democratic input or oversight. Butterflies, swallowtails, and fiery skippers are now in Northampton, Massachusetts, 1,000 miles north of their local traditional grounds. Wonder what they're doing out there? Well, let me give you a number, 73. 73 days. This year, we have 90-plus degree temperature right here in Longmont. 20 years ago, what was the record? About 50 days. Now it's 73. Think about that.
Thank you, Strider. Is there anyone else in the audience who'd like to speak and address the council at this time?
I'd sort of expected you to call my name. Maybe you've forgotten it. Paul Tiger, 452 Dixon Street. Good evening. I'm sure you've got my appreciation note about the odor, which is no longer, and I do appreciate the folks at water treatment, sewer treatment, who responded to that. I'm here tonight to talk about the upcoming election. You see me wearing my no whining button, and that's what it's about. The issue is the clerk of Bulwark County, who you've contracted with, I believe, on 14th of the month of last month, to conduct our elections. And the Hart Inter-Civic Ballot Now system uses barcodes and unique numbers. This is actually contrary to the Constitution of Colorado, which specifically says that no marking that can trace the person who cast the ballot back to them can be used. And the county commissioners and the county clerk, then Salas, and a different group of head honchos were pretty much aware of this at the time when they purchased the system back in 2004. Dunetta Davidson, no longer our Secretary of State, gave Linda Salas a waiver, a waiver to waive the Constitution of Colorado. Very interesting thing. Section 8, Article, sorry, Article 8, Section 7. Just waive that. You don't have to do that. Government, the Constitution controls government. The rest of the code controls the people. So now, the Gessler finding out that they're in Chaffee and Teller Counties, and the last election activists were able to show that they could, in fact, trace ballots back to voters. So Gessler said, hey, we've got six of these systems in Colorado, plus there are a couple of others that do this unique number thing, and it's against the Constitution. So he issued a rule 12-003 that said, don't use them. Don't have barcodes on the ballots. We have an option here for those, and that is to have a tear-off stub. But our county clerk has, on Friday, defied the Secretary of State and said that she's going to proceed with this election. There's a lawsuit in progress, and it's very possible that this city will not have its voters counted because the election will be nullified. Please take this under advisement.
Thank you, Paul. I will close the public invited to be heard. So I guess we're ready for our studies. Do you want to introduce the items?
Mayor, your first item is the presentation of issues in the 2013 budget, and will be presented by Teresa Malloy.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council, Teresa Malloy, the city's budget manager. And this evening, we have a variety of topics that we're going to talk to you about. We're going to start off with an overall budget summary. We're going to follow that by a general fund summary, and within that general fund topic, we're going to talk to you about the general fund one-time expenditures that are in our proposed 13 budget. And part of that conversation is going to include the requests from agencies for council one-time funding, some of those you have heard about already this evening. There are some other speakers lined up to talk to you about some additional requests as well. We're going to follow that then by academic development, and then a public safety fund summary, and then we're going to wrap up this evening with the Human Service Agency funding recommendations. So I do want to remind you that the copies that have been placed at your council desk this evening are for you to put in the back of your budget documents after you're finished with them this evening, in case we need to refer back to these at a later point in our process. We have several staff members who are going to be talking to you this evening. And then in addition to those staff members that you will hear from, we also have a lot of other staff members in the audience here in case there are questions. So if you have any questions on anything in the presentation that you'll be hearing or in just the budget in general, we have the experts here, so hopefully, we can answer your questions this evening. So we're going to start off with, again, the overall budget summary, and Jim Golden's going to start it off for us.
I'm Jim Golden, Director of Finance. So as Teresa indicated, the first section that we'll be doing is an overview of the budget, particularly the city's general fund. The overall proposed budget for 2013, all funds, 38 funds included, is $226.7 million. It's a 4.63% increase, about $10 million increase over our 2012 budget. The funds with the largest percentage increases or decreases are mostly due to capital programs and expenses. You have a number of attachments to your communication tonight. I'll be referring to them throughout my presentation. The first of those is Attachment C, which is on page 19 or else S86 for the budget numbering, and that is showing each of those 38 funds and the budget for 2012 compared to the budget for 2013, and the dollar amount change and the percentage change from 2013 to 2012. And those that have significant differences, out in the right column, we've identified what's driving those significant differences. So I'm not going to get into those individually, but if you have questions, we'll be glad to answer that. And by the way, stop me anywhere along the way tonight if you do have questions about anything I'm talking about. So we're going to move into some revenue projections that went into putting together this 2013 budget. Predominantly, our revenue is driven by sales tax and property tax as well as development revenue. Starting with sales tax, our performance through July of 2012, we are up 2.9% for the year for seven months. Sales tax is up 2.6%, use tax is up 4.7%. Our projections were based on, initially based on five months of data. We did get a look at the six-month of data that we made some final adjustments to as we were balancing the budget as well. But primarily, what our projections for 2013 were based on what we were seeing through the first five months of activity in the city. So we do drive down, there's 12 categories of businesses that are identified on your sales and use tax revenue analysis every month, and we drove down to some lower levels within each of those areas, looking at the major contributors of the sales and use tax to see how each of them are faring so far, as well as considering what type of changes we might be seeing in the plans for either late 2012 or into 2013. What we project from there is how we would end 2012. And as always, we are conservative. We felt that our sales tax would drop a bit, and as you are aware, until this past month, this seventh month, the third through the sixth months, we were losing ground throughout our sales and use tax revenues, and so we were taking that into consideration. Our sales tax, we thought, would drop to 2.2% this year, and our use tax to 1.5% decline. Reason for that is, again, there's been a large decrease since the first two months of the year in our use tax collections. Our primary employers were the greatest driver in the negative direction. We have a number of significant contributors to our use tax that are down quite a bit compared to 2011, and we are seeing that trend continue. We also were concerned about the amount of growth that we saw so far through the first six months for our lumber use tax, and whether or not we could continue to sustain that throughout the whole year. So those are really what combined to drive that use tax projection to drop in 2012. Pointing out to you in the past and in our monthly reports, that use tax is very cyclical. We see each of these go in different directions from year to year, particularly with primary employers. It doesn't necessarily follow the local economy. It really depends on the individual business, and how they're ramping up, and how they're spending their dollars on equipment and software and things like that. And that's, again, there's never a trend that is across all businesses. Really, each business stands by itself. So projecting for 2013, we've actually went through the numbers in great detail, and actually, the combined projection for 2013 was actually the same that we came to you a year ago, 2.34%, which is what we have for 2012. Purely coincidental, the sales tax increase was 2.21%. What we took into consideration there is with redevelopment of Twin Peaks Mall, if that gets underway, we expect that the sales out there currently would be lost in 2013, so we did not count on any of those sales tax revenues in 2013. Use tax wise, again, with the cyclical approach, we thought that some of these... Use tax wise, again, with the cyclical approach, we thought that some of these employers that, that are having a down year this year might begin to rebound next year, as we've seen them go back and forth over the past. So, this is where we combined to, to get the two point three-four percent increase from. Building permit revenue estimates, this comes from the economic development department. In two thousand and twelve, our budget is based on eighty-seven total dwelling units, thirty-four single-family, and fifty-three townhouse condo. So far, through eight months, we've already received one hundred and eleven dwelling units, so we've exceeded those projections already. And so, that's had an impact of what I mentioned on our lumber use tax, and what the projections for two thousand and thirteen are reflecting both activity this year, as well as those developments that economic development staff are aware of, that may be in development stages, and could come to fruition next year. So, we have a combination of one hundred and eighty-five dwelling units projected for thirteen. Property tax, we used information from the assessor's office that we received in the summer, middle of summer, of a two-tenths of a percent decrease in property tax revenues compared to our two thousand and twelve budget. So, that's twenty-eight thousand dollar decline that we've programmed here. We will get the final certifications in late November, possibly early December. Obviously, too late to make changes in the, in the proposed budget. It is possible, and has happened in the past, that we've lost revenue between the early projections and the final certification. If that happens, it's a situation that we, we really just go into two thousand and thirteen with a projection of more revenue than we may receive. So, there are, there always is a possibility, less of a possibility this year because it's, it's not a reassessment year. Excuse me. So, when we talked to you over the last couple of months, as well as last week, we've brought out the, the different challenges that we were going to be seeing in the general fund in two thousand and thirteen. Talked to you about those before, I'm not going to get into the big detail again, but the allocation of the two percent sales and use tax between the general fund and public improvement fund. That's a concern, has an impact in the revenue allocation, ongoing type expenses with one year commitment. Those are things that we've said in the past that we need to repair in the general fund. We'll talk about that in more detail a little bit. Teresa's going to take you through those ongoing type expenses and the changes for next year. Council gave staff direction to prepare a budget that would reduce these, these two impacts as much as possible, and also as a lesser priority that we could, we should include a pay increase if it is affordable. Here's the detail again, nine hundred and eighty-nine thousand, three hundred and eighty-five dollars, based on the sales and use tax allocation, the differential between the general fund and the public improvement fund. What we do have in the two thousand and thirteen proposed budget for the public improvement fund, which you'll hear about in detail next week, is we do have the use of one point one-three million dollars of fund balance. This is from use tax revenue in excess of budget in last year and this year, and that's going to be used to replace the revenues that we would have had if the allocation of the sales tax was still eighty-five fifteen. So, we will still be able to fund those infrastructure maintenance projects, at least in, in two thousand and thirteen. Going forward into the future, it's still going to be an issue, and is important for us to fund the proper level of capital maintenance in our public improvement fund, so that we can avoid the risk of our infrastructure breaking down in the future. The ongoing type expenses, one-year commitment, we reduced those from five hundred and seventy-seven thousand last year to a hundred and ninety-eight thousand this year. And as I mentioned, there is a pay increase in the budget. So, now getting into a little bit more of the detail of this proposed general fund budget, I'm going to spend a little bit time dissecting the changes from two thousand and twelve to two thousand and thirteen in the general fund. The ongoing revenue expenses where I'm focusing first, last year, two thousand and twelve's budget was sixty-one million, one hundred and seventy thousand. This year's ongoing revenue and expenses, sixty-two million, eight hundred and ninety-four thousand. So, the difference is a two point seven percent increase from last year to this year, one million, six hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollar difference. On the expense side, the, what drove that, first, we do have a reduction of ongoing expenses in, in two thousand and thirteen, as much as seven hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. On Attachment E, which is on page S eighty-nine, or else page twenty-three of your packet, we do have some, some detail broken out there on these changes in the ongoing expenses in the general fund from one year to the next. We do have an increase in ongoing expenses of two point three-six million dollars. So, those two combined to, to make up that one point six million dollar difference. Some of the line item reductions in our base budget expenses, there's three hundred and sixty-three thousand, five hundred and eighty dollars of line item reductions that I have identified here on this slide by departments or by non-departmental areas. You do have a greater level of detail on that Attachment E that I referenced, going down to some of the divisions within each of these departments, and it's showing you where we have made some reductions, at least in the divisions in their line items. Some areas, some of the larger areas of reductions are in the, in finance and internal services. For ETS, we have reduced forty thousand dollars for disaster recovery expenses, as well as about fifteen thousand or so dollars for phone expenses that were, we are seeing that, those are budgeted phone expenses, that we're seeing those savings from our new phone system, and we're able to make that reduction. And also, in, in finance and internal services in the accounting area, we have reduced the maintenance on our hat system, our accounting HR system, that you're going to hear more about tonight, based on what we know now about ongoing maintenance on the potential systems that we could be selecting in the near future. We do know that we would be able to reduce our budget that was adopted this year for two thousand and twelve by fifty thousand dollars for the ongoing maintenance for that, for the hat system. Some other areas of reductions are in the city manager's office. I think we reduced the long-mont life to half, every other month? Nope. It's no month. So, sorry about that. But we reduced long-mont life altogether. That is, there's a sixty-five thousand dollar reduction. Most of it, I think, is from that reduction of long-mont life. We have reduction in our parks area of over twenty thousand dollars for, for tree planting In the human resources, about eighteen thousand dollars of reduction for recruitment expenses. And in the city clerk's area, there's reduction of twenty-three thousand dollars or so, and I think this is, comes back to election expenses as well. So, other reductions in our, our base budget expenses, that are not line item necessarily cuts, but some adjustments in Union Reservoir lease of surface rights for Union Reservoir are seventy-seven thousand, four hundred and ninety-seven dollars. We've actually moved those from the general fund to the water enterprise fund. We do have financial policy currently that the, the water fund will pay for the cost of water services in the general fund. And in fact, the, the water fund has been paying for the recreational surface rights at Macintosh Lake historically, and so, we recommended the consistent treatment of the same expenses for Union Reservoir by moving those to the water enterprise fund for two thousand and thirteen. In the, actually, across most of the city service budgets, but in the area of the general fund itself, there's a reduction in fleet lease charges of two hundred and eighty-seven thousand, five hundred and fifty-five dollars from two thousand and twelve to two thousand and thirteen. It's a pretty significant amount of decrease, but mostly because of credits that the fund is receiving back for reduction of vehicles that have been eliminated in, mostly in the, in the Public Works Natural Resources area. We also have received some depreciation and salvage credits on, on vehicles that have been replaced, and the older vehicles have been sold to receive salvage, and we've had depreciation recovery on those as well. In addition to that, we've had a large savings from what we budgeted in two thousand and twelve compared to thirteen, because we're able to lock our fuel costs throughout the year for two thousand and thirteen. So, we were able to reduce our budget significantly in that respect.
Could we pause you for just a second and ask a question?
Sure.
Captain Member Santos.
Thank you, Mayor. Jim, why were the surface rights being paid for out of the general fund instead of the water enterprise fund? And do we have other items that are being paid out of the general fund that could be paid out of other funds?
Mayor Coombs, Members of Council, I guess, in answer to your ratty question, I guess some would say that we're always looking for those. But, and so, I don't think there are any that we are, have not identified in that respect. But I think when we initiated the operations of, at Union Reservoir, that was, the revenue as well as the expense was, was always being borne in the, in the city's general fund, being that it was a parks or recreational type of purpose, being run by staff out of the city's general fund as well. So, we, and that being a more active operation, where we are actually staffing it to some degree, as opposed to what happened out in Macintosh, where we just purchased the, the rights. At that point, we did decide to do that with the, with the water fund at that time, but never really considered making that switch. So, to tell you the truth, it wasn't considered earlier on.
Part of the discussion, this was actually something that we spent quite a bit of time on moving back and forth, but as we look back at the history of this acquisition, what we found is that this property was purchased for water rights. Apparently, subsequent to that purchase, there was a private operation located at that facility, and it closed down, and I guess there was a request by the citizens of our community to then engage in that discussion. And so, I guess that's where it was included in terms of a general fund operation. As we began discussing this issue, and it was something that Dale and Jim and I spent some time on, it was really, would we have gotten into this operation from a general fund perspective, had we not have purchased this property? And as we moved through that discussion, I think we determined that, no, if we had not purchased this property for water rights, this would not be an expense that was borne by the general fund. We then shifted onto the other side and said, would we have purchased this property for water if we knew that we were going to have to engage in some type of recreation opportunity? And the answer was yes. And so, in terms of looking at the costing of this operation, we felt that it was something that needed to be on the water side, because it was the water fund that actually created the demand for this service. Is that accurate?
It just surprises me that Macintosh Water Rights were bought, what, oh, three oh four?
Certainly subsequent to, to Union Reservoir, but I'm not sure when.
Right. Dale's coming down, it'll be coming down here.
Now, while Dale's coming down, I will tell you that in this discussion, we've also, there, there was a product that occurred in, in the reorganization when it sort of, when it all really then fell with Public Works and Natural Resources. And so, we're having current discussions in terms of what, how do we continue moving in this direction to look at the efficient and effective operations of this facility while at the same time providing a service to the community?
Hi, Dale.
I'm Mayor Coombs and Mayor Captain Santos. So, Macintosh, Macintosh versus Union. The differences there are, as Harold has explained, but in addition to that, Macintosh, there's no ability to collect revenues. It's essentially open for enjoyment for all, at no cost. That's, in other words, you can fully enjoy it. So, there was really no ability for the general fund to recoup any of the costs of that lease. And so, we looked at that and said, well, maybe that's not a burden that we ought to keep on our general fund, and Teresa's told me we did that back in two thousand and three. We never actually purchased Macintosh. We have been getting shares of Macintosh as land has developed in the city, and we accept it as non-historic water. And so, at this time, it says about forty-five percent ownership of Macintosh. So, that was the difference. So, at a Union, you're able to charge a fee, you got a gate cost and those kinds of things. And so, they, we were trying to run it more from a business perspective out of the general fund. Reality is, haven't been able to make that a full, fully recovery. And as Harold mentioned, and I think his experience in San Angelo, was that typically that is a cost that the water fund assumes when you bring these kinds of assets into the, to the community, and when there's a demand to provide those kinds of additional activities. So, it wasn't necessarily a conscious decision not to do it, it was that those two reservoirs were seen differently with regards to their ability to generate revenue.
You know, and I get that. My in-laws were members of the old Macintosh, I guess, club.
Club or club.
Yes, I remember being out there before with the, the lease, the city took over the lease. But it just surprised me after all, all those years, that it, we just didn't place the Union Reservoir lease under the water enterprise fund. And I get some of the reasoning, but it just, it would seem more, it's pretty obvious that's where it should have been from the beginning.
And as City Manager Dominguez said, the, our goal, as it is in all areas around the city, ongoing, is to also work the, the cost and revenue sides of that operation to get it as close as we can to cost recovery.
Thanks.
In our, I think it was just some different perspectives that came into play in the discussion that kind of took it to another level in terms of where we eventually made this decision, so.
Mayor Coombs, Members of Council, I do want to apologize, I didn't point that out in, in the budget message, and it is kind of a significant change in dollar amount that, that escaped me when we were writing that. But certainly weren't trying to hide that fact, but wanted to bring it forward to you tonight for sure, to make sure you're aware of that. So, moving on from there, a little bit on the increases in ongoing expenses. We have, as you've heard in the past, we have three different levels or types of expenses that we typically add in our general fund. Level one type expenses is to, to maintain existing service levels. Most of those type expenses, we're going to have to pay them whether we receive the funding or not, because they're increases, say, in utilities or contract costs and things like that, or we're already paying them elsewhere. This is three hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars. Ongoing level two is, in a sense, increased costs or increased levels of service. Attachment F, actually, which is on page S ninety and page twenty-five of the packet tonight, there is some detail on what makes up these ongoing level one and two expenses. Third category is ongoing from one-time items, and we'll be giving you a little detail on our one-time costs that are being added in the general fund. But a lot of those that are, let's say, technology-related, do have accompanying ongoing maintenance costs. So, that third category here is twenty-six thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars of those type expenses. So, other increases in ongoing expenses.
That's fine. I think I would point out that when you look at ongoing level one, out of the three hundred and sixty-nine thousand, there was approximately five hundred and eighty thousand in request. And on the level two, at the two forty-nine, I'm going through, there was five hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars of request for those two categories.
Right. And actually, also, I should add that in the level one of the three hundred and sixty-nine thousand, a hundred and eighty thousand of it, at least, I believe, is for ongoing expenses with one-time commitment from last year. So, that's a hundred thousand dollars for contract tree trimming, and eighty thousand dollars for seasonal temporary labor for right-of-way costs. So, not new costs necessarily, but they are to maintain existing level services, and so that's why they categorizes as level one increases. So, other expenses within the proposed budget for the general fund for two thousand and thirteen, other increases include, and these, there's detail on these, again, on Attachment E now, which is, E and G, actually, will show some detail, page S eighty-nine and ninety-one. will show some detail, pages 89 and 91, and also pages 23, 27 in the packet. So it's collective bargaining pay increases are $329,000 for the two collective bargaining contracts, which will be coming to you for approval next week. We have step pay increases for our public safety employees in the step system, that's $129,000. All other general fund employees receiving a 1% pay increase, this would be employees not necessarily below market or subject to the matrix, this is $153,000. The matrix we talked about last week, I should have finished that sentence. Pay plan adjustments are for positions that were found to be out of market in benchmarking and we have criteria if they're out of market for a period of two to three years, depending on a seven or to 10 percentage points behind market, then we move them to the next pay grade. You heard about those a little bit last week, there were 12 positions moving up in the city and some, not all of those were in the general fund, but the cost of them to the general fund that were in the general fund are $81,000. Increase in temporary wage budgets to reflect either 1% increase or the minimum wage is $32,000. We have increases in our workers' compensation costs for the general fund. We allocate the increases in our workers' compensation costs based on where our claims are being driven from. So the share for the general fund is $183,000 increase between, from 12 to 13. A lot of our costs there come in the public safety area, so that's a large dollar amount. We had to increase our funding this year to try to strengthen that fund's financial position. Health cost increases, last week we talked to you about the contribution increasing that was, that is based on employee pay, it was increasing by 1.2%. This is the impact to the general fund, $395,000. I also mentioned the defined benefit pension plan increase cost due to actual contribution requirements increasing two tenths of a percent, this is $36,000. And then human service agency funding, that is tied currently under your financial policy as 1.6% of ongoing general fund revenues. And so due to the increase in general fund revenues, this increases $26,000. So other increases in ongoing expenses are for some 1.6 FTE that are being added in the general fund in this year's budget, it's $211,000 total. One FTE Assistant City Manager, which actually was going to be added later this year, currently under recruitment, and .6 FTE Assistant Museum Curator. And we'll be referring to a couple of offsetting items. Both these positions are being funded from impact on some of the line item reductions that I referred to previously. Within the museum itself, the .6 FTE Assistant Museum Curator is costing about $33,000, but the impact of that is being offset by a decrease in temporary wages in the museum of $19,000 and increase in museum special event fees of $14,000. So the net effect of a museum position is no new increase cost to the general fund in total.
Councilmember.
Could you go back to the one before that one? The human service agency funding of $26,282, you say that's an automatic 1.6% of the general fund?
1.6% of general fund revenues, so with that.
And why is that?
Well, that's currently the city's financial policy, has been that way for a little while. And did we put the detail on this next week? And it was historic, before that, it's been tied to a number of different things over the years, but in probably over the last 20 years or so, it's been tied to a percentage of ongoing revenues. Previous to that, it was representing a mill, a mill of our property tax. And when we had a major change in the assessed valuation in the early 90s, where our assessed valuation increased dramatically by almost 50%, we actually changed our mill levy down from like 17 mills to where we're at today to offset that cost to the citizens. And so at that point, the mill levy tie didn't really equate to the same type dollars anymore. So we looked for a new way to tie it to. And councils at that time wanted to tie it to some sort of increase so that there would be some increase in this level of funding for those outside agencies.
So they just came up with the 1.6 now?
I think at that point it equated to the amount of dollars that we were trying to put into there or maintain into there as we were doing before with the one-mill levy. And then from there, it was just tied to how much of that is one-mill worth.
Okay, thank you.
You bet.
So I had this question actually brought to my attention on a couple of occasions
and specific questions, when they brought it to me, they basically said, so if we have a revenue line item come in from, for example, recreation fees, is 1.6% allocated to that amount? And based on our discussions, the answer is yes. I know as we were moving through the budget process, we actually looked at this and worked through some different formulas in terms of trying to figure out, is there a better way to really address this issue? And what we found in those discussions is that there were issues in those formulas. And so I think this is actually being placed on the next council.
The financial policies will be on next week's council agenda. It's not currently proposed to change, but it is in front of you next week for discussion.
Based on the question, should council want to provide any different direction to staff on this issue? You can take that, you can give us that direction so we can try to incorporate that within the financial policies as we bring those to you next week. But that was an item that I've had several questions on over the last few days, so I wanted to point that out. The other thing I wanted to point out is when we looked at the ACM position, as it indicated in the budget messages, that was also covered via cuts that we made to the budget going through this process as well.
Councilmember Levison?
So even though we didn't really have maybe a policy justification coming from the community to increase that budget, I mean, when we shifted the split of the 2% of the sales tax from 85 to 15, basically we didn't get, when we went up to 88%, human service budget just grew automatically even though we didn't really generate any revenue, it was all the same money. And there we go. You know, and so when, also if we're looking at, well, frankly, when we used the general fund last year as a pass-through with the over $900,000 that we cost shifted into the Public Improvement Fund, basically, we could have gotten more money than PIF because of not running it through the general fund. Right?
Mayor Coombs, Councilmember Levison, the first comment you made was correct, I'll unfollow the second one, but I think you're talking about a fund balance transfer.
Right.
And if that's the case, it's only based on operating ongoing type revenues, so no, no to the second part of it. But yes to the first, as far as the allocation of the sales and use tax at 2%, yes, that portion that is not new revenue to the city, but was new to the general fund or graded to the general fund, 1.6% of it went to the human service agencies. Now, at that point in time, we were dealing with decreased revenue. And so I think, I'm not so sure they got more revenue, they just got more revenue than they would have gotten at that point in time.
I just remember remarking that it seemed like that fund kept increasing when everything else wasn't really increasing at the same kind of a rate. The other thing I have an issue with in this particular financial policy also is when we start the year with the money, the base money, we've already taken the 1.6 once out of that money, then it becomes what the base revenue that we start off the 2013 budget with. So, and then we'll take another 1.6% out of that because now it's part of the general fund. So basically, we're double dipping on that first amount, aren't we? When we do the carryover funds.
No, Mayor Coombs, Members of the Council, again, carryover is not an ongoing revenue. So this again is just based on the ongoing revenues in the general fund that we budget. It's actually based on budgeted ongoing revenues and not necessarily actual. So when we carry dollars over, it's not impacting the amount that goes to the outside agencies.
But would also be affected if we got revenue from grants or other outside funds that's budgeted in the general fund?
That's correct, although most grants are budgeted as additional appropriations, so not many actually are impacted by this, but some are.
Some are, okay, thank you.
Then I think this is where we're headed. So we're talking about changes in revenue and again, I think, on attachment G, which is page S91 and 27, we have some detail on these changes in ongoing revenue. So some of the major changes for the general fund from 12 to 13 is a decrease in property tax of $28,000, mentioned that previously. Parks maintenance fee, this is a difference changing the budgeted amount, essentially because we were budgeted too high last year, so expect that to be lower by $15,400. We have changes in administrative transfer fees, decreases of $104,000 and change. Again, I talked to you last week about the refinement of some of these admin transfer fees, we've been doing that in this year's budget process and so part of the impact of this decrease is as a result of some of the changes that we've made in refinement of our transfer fees. Also, what you're seeing is the fact that there's not a lot of increase in costs in the general fund in the sense of the salary and benefits from year to year that we're charging back based on, so there's not large dollar increases in the ATF to pass back on. So wherever we make line item cuts, particularly out of those support service type of division areas, a share of those, the impact of those cuts is being passed on through our administrative transfer fees as well. So, because what we're, it's costing us to provide that service throughout the organization is lower and so in turn, the enterprise funds also enjoy that benefit of those decreases. Interesting, Coombs, I don't know if you need me to explain that, where you'll probably suffering from that as well as this. Increases in ongoing revenue. The sales and use tax increase projection that we talked about is, does have over a million dollar impact in the 2013 budget. We have impact of electric revenues, the franchise that we charge, the electric pharma 8% franchise, based on their projected revenues and their increase in their rates is going to result in a $313,000 more franchise fee. Phone franchise is increasing by almost $67,000. This is dollars that we've been receiving but not budgeting and we finally have been able to get straight with one of our phone providers about the number of lines that they do have and that they pay on. Building permits, again, I talked about the development revenue projections increasing, so in turn, our building permits and plan check fees, next two items are increasing as well, $48,000 and $26,000. Next week, you'll be hearing about fee increases in recreation. Union, Teresa, is there a fee increase there? There is also a fee increase at Union Reservoir, which is resulting in the $30,000 increase, which you'll also be hearing about next week. The lease of real property is the cheese importers building that we are now leasing out, so this is actually a pass-through of revenue and expense. And then, which 1.6% goes to outside agencies. And then finally, we have museum special event fees that I referred to previously. So again, this just summarizes the difference from 12 to 13, a little over 1.6 million This is a summary of our FTE in the budget, broken down mostly by the major funds here. So we do have six funds that are shown here that we're comparing at 2002, which probably was a peak of our budgeted FTE at that point in time. And it was actually before we had a public safety tax in place. So since that time, we've had a public safety tax increase our FTE by 41 FTE. But even despite that increase of 41 FTE, overall, our decrease from 2002 through this proposed budget in 13 is over 20 FTE decrease. So when you add in the public safety FTE, it's about a 62 FTE decrease from 2002. This changes from the unit are between different funds, sometimes based on staffing in Public Works Natural Resources, but the actual changes this year, again, there was a net increase of 1.6 FTE throughout the whole proposed budget. It's all within the general fund. I mentioned the 1.6 FTE that are being added out of ongoing expenses. We are also eliminating one vacant grounds maintenance tech two position in parks, we're able to eliminate that from our strategic efforts such as course training and outsourcing and such. And in turn, we're also adding one other position, but it's not out of ongoing revenues. It's an accounting budget analyst, which was actually added already this year, has been filled, it's been filled for a fixed term through the year 2014. And so we're using one-time dollars to fund that position. It's actually being, it's a position that's backfilling within our finance department. Some of the staff that are going to be, have been and will be involved in the HATS project, which is our human resources and accounting technology project. And you'll be hearing a little bit more about that in a couple of minutes as well. Let's talk a little bit about our general fund reserve. First here, we have our 2012 reserve data. This first area is the budget targets for 2012, based on, these are all, these percentages are all geared off of our percent of budgeted ongoing operating expenditures in the city's general fund. So the Tabor Reserve, that's a dollar amount that is calculated by a formula that is within Tabor. So it's 3% of citywide fiscal year spending, but what it equates to in 2012's budget is 4.9% of budgeted operating expenditures, a little over $3 million. Our next reserve policy target is an 8% emergency reserve, which is $4.89 million in 12. And then we would have a stabilization reserve beyond that, which would be our final target from anywhere from 3 to 8%, so 1.8 million to 4.9 million. So our overall reserve target would be 15.9% to 20.9%. Again, this is in 2012 and the dollar amount would have been 9.7 million to 12.8 million. So what we do have funded, based on our actions coming into this 2012 budget year, is $6.6 million total reserves, a 10.8% total. We have the Tabor Reserve requirement met as we always have in the past, and we have emergency reserves on top of that of $3.6 million. So that's going towards our 8% requirement in the emergency, first emergency reserve there, we're at 5.9% currently. So now, based on this proposed budget... There, we're at 5.9% currently. So now, based on this proposed budget, and what I should point out is, is that this $6.6 million was increased by $730,000 in the 2012 budget process. So in the 2013 proposed budget, now based on the proposed dollar amount of ongoing operating expenditures in the general fund, these percentages changes, change in some respect the, the dollar amounts will as well. The table reserve, the table amount, still the same calculation until the end of this year. So that's at 4.8%, $3 million again. The 8%, 8% reserve is now a little over $5 million. 3.3 to 8% is 1.8 to $5 million. And the total reserve target is 9.9 million to $13 million. And now, again, the same dollar amounts, because that's where we're at today, is what we have funded, the, the whole table reserve. And the amount of our emergency reserves currently would be 5.7% of next year's budget. So unfortunately, this, this proposed budget does not have a proposed addition to the reserves for, for 2013. This is based on the fact that we have a limited amount of, of fund balance available within the 2012, going into 13 general fund that is going to be, we'll be talking about here in just a few seconds here, about our one-time expenses for 2013. And that's where most of those dollars are programmed. So we are unable to recommend any additional amount being added to the reserves at this point in time. So let me tell you about, about that fund balance. So our unreserved, undesigned fund balance to start this year was 1.45 million. That's how we finished 2011 operations. So far this year, we've used $344,000 of that fund balance, most of it to relocate the museum artifacts and also for some economic development incentives and accumulated leave payout for the city manager. All those three items were unbudgeted expenses that we needed to deal with in the, in the first three, four months of, of this year. So what that left us was a little over $1.1 million as a starting point for our one-time expenses for this 13 budget. What we have projected to net on top of that from 2012 operations in the sense of excess revenues in the general fund beyond budget or expenditure savings underneath budget, is $646,000 from 2012 operations. So that really gave us $1.75 million for, for one-time expenses. And then on top of that, there's another $50,000 that's being taken from the city council reserve designated for future council one-time expenditures. That's a part of the general fund fund balance, has been there for a number of years. And those dollars were approved earlier this year as to be used for public improvements in the Roosevelt Apartments project. So that $50,000 is budgeted in next year's proposed budget from the general fund. So we get to $1.8 million as the amount of fund balance for one-time expenditures from the general fund itself. And on top of that, as, and we'll look here at the expenses, the one-time expenses in the general fund for 2013 proposed budget of $4.5 million total. A number of those dollars are being, those expenses are being funded from transfers from other funds. As we allocate the, the cost of mostly our IT projects and the HATS project back to the other funds, there's a $2.7 million cost sharing in these total one-time expenses in the 2013 proposed budget. So, so the situation where the fund balance available for one-time expenses is, is limited is, is not really expected to be very unique in the future. It's something we'll probably be dealing with from year to year. We've taken actions in recent, recent budgets that are designed to move employee pay towards market. And also, we've got multiple years where we've had line item reductions that both of those have combined to decrease the level of, of budget savings that we've generated in, in past years. We don't expect to see those, those levels of savings in, in future years or this year as much either. So that in turn is going to hamper our ability to increase that reserve balance that I was getting at in the general fund in the future. So it's going to be slower going as far as moving dollars towards the general fund reserves. So if we move now into the general fund one-time expenses, and there is a full list of those one-time expenses that is, is included in your, your budget on pages S58 and S60, that, I mean, S58, 59 for the general fund.
Hey Jim, are there any questions from council at this point?
Yeah.
Okay.
So those, pages S58 and 59 were last week's packet. But those are the two pages of full identification of one-time expenses, the $4.5 million that I have identified here on the, on PowerPoint. So there's five different categories of expenses that are identified there. And I want to take you through those. First is, is capital equipment of $101,000. We're going to get into, into some of the detail of some of these items here in a minute. But the IT equipment at $3.3 million, $2.6 million of that is, is again, towards the purchase of the HATS project, the financial human resources software system. On top of that, we also have $150,000 budgeted to migrate to Microsoft Exchange next year. We have $109,000 for PC and laptop replacements. This is just in the general fund employees. And we also have $253,000 budgeted toward the replacement of our current permits, permits plus software system in our building inspection division. We have $126,000 of non-capital small equipment. And then we have $713,000 of one-time services or expenses. So we look at these and consider these to be true one-time expenses. Some of them are on our pilot programs that may be in their final year. So we don't look at those as being as other expenses with one-year commitment. And so that's the final category that we have up there. And that, as I said, again, decreased down to $198,812. So what I'm going to do is go back here and back up to the HATS project. And I'm going to have Assistant Finance Director Molly Costalecki step up here to tell you a little bit about this, since this is a significant expenditure in the, in the 2013 budget. And then we'll come back also as well to a little bit more about the other one-time expenses.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Again, my name is Molly Costalecki, the Assistant Finance Director for the city. And today, I'm pleased to talk to you about the HATS project, the Human Resources and Accounting Technologies Solution Project. I was before the council last fall and introduced this project then, but I'll remind everyone what this project really is about. And that's about selecting and implementing a new enterprise-wide resource planning solution, or ERP, throughout the city. This would replace our current accounting and human resources and payroll system. And just to remind you that the last time the city did purchase, implement a system, it was about 27 years ago, back in 1985. So the intent really of this project is to replace those core business services and the finance and human resources and payroll systems with a browser-based, transaction-based, fully-integrated, enterprise-wide planning solution. The current system really lacks some significant functionality. It's not efficient, and it doesn't provide a complete and consistent view of our financial picture. Some of the key business drivers are listed up here. We'd like to improve process efficiency, improve data accuracy, improve access to data, allow managers to have better access to data to make more timely decisions, and expand the use of electronic forms and workflows. And these are really our success majors for the project. And again, we also dig down just a little bit further and talk about our project objectives. One of the major points of this project would be to implement an out-of-the-box solution in that we would not be utilizing custom, system customizations. We'd be utilizing the process, processes that exist within a package to implement best business practices. And using, using that system to do that, we'd like a system that is user-friendly and that empowers the departments to improve their business processes. We want to add and improve the functionality in the back office, like in the accounting office and in the budget office and purchasing office. We want to improve the quality and access to information for better decision-making and improve redundancy of data entry. And I can talk a little bit more about an example of that in a minute. Improve our operational effectiveness and productivity, and expand the browser-based employee self-service options. We're proposing a total project budget of $4.2 million. This would include software implementation services, staffing backfill, change management services, hardware, other contingencies. What you're seeing before you in the 2013 budget request is $2.6 million. Only 302,000 of that really is in the general fund. The rest will be transferred in from, from other funds that, that are supported by this system. Again, it's an enterprise-wide system. All, all areas will be affected by this, every person that works for the city. While we're having a timeline, when I came before the council last year, we were at the very beginning stages of the procurement process. And we still are, we still are in the procurement process, but we're getting close to making a selection and beginning contracting. We expect that to be complete by the end of the year, which would give us a beginning, or, or beginning implementation in early 2013. And we expect the project to last about two years or ending in 2014. We asked our vendors who proposed on this project to provide their estimates on rate of return on a project like this. And we have been given some information from those vendors for similar projects, for similar like organizations that have similar processes to our city about the savings that, that would incur, that would be incurred from this type of a project. And the average of those return on investments, they have estimated to be about $1 million of savings annually, both in efficiency. So that would be repurposing potentially staff from doing maybe a data entry task to more of an analytics task, and some hard dollar savings such as paper and forms and copying and misfiling of, of documents and that sort of thing. In looking at that, we could estimate and realize probably about half of that, we're guessing about $500,000 of annual savings, which would really give us a payback of eight or nine years. Keeping in mind, governments, and especially our government, tends to keep things around. If we kept the old system for 27 years, pretty typical that governments keep ERP systems for about 15 to 20 years. We certainly fall above the average in that extent. And, 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 you know, although we haven't verified independently all the rate of return information from the, from the vendors, it seems as though we get about $500,000 worth of savings, or repurpose really inefficiencies of our staff's time, as well as some, maybe a few hard dollar savings.
Thank you, Molly. Do you know, have you projected any cost for kind of keeping the system up and running, operations and maintenance above and beyond? And, and is this initial amount include some of that built in to work out the kinks? Although there won't be no kinks, right? We're going to like run two systems at once, and then there'll be a big switch that goes and everything will be perfect, right?
Mayor and Councilmember Levinson, that is very optimistic. There certainly is a, it's a very complicated and large project. And yes, we'll be running in parallel and there will be a switch, but it will happen in a phased approach. To answer your question, we did budget and put in the 2012 budget an ongoing maintenance expense of $200,000. Jim mentioned earlier that we reduced our accounting maintenance fees of $50,000. Typically, vendors charge 20% or so of their licensing fees for maintenance. And based on our proposals, that's why we reduced that amount. So we have included already in our ongoing expenses a maintenance amount for the system.
And that's for the, well, we're going to have continued maintenance on the old system, and then we'll have maintenance on the new system overlapping, right? So the first couple of years, we might actually have additional expense that, you know, because we can't just throw the switch in one day.
Mayor, I would agree with that. However, our, our current system is a legacy system. It's not maintained externally. It's all maintained by internal staff. So it's just a matter of providing enough staffing resources. And that's one of the reasons why we have included staffing in our project costs to backfill those positions to make sure we have enough staff to do both things at the same time.
When you track the ROI, are we going to be tracking that internally as well as getting the numbers from the vendor?
Tracking the ROI, you know, at this point, we haven't really identified exactly what those returns are going to be. It's going to be a work in progress, I think, over, it's over, through the implementation. And then again, the first year will be fully live on the, the whole system will be 2015. And that, you might see some savings in your 2015 budget request. The vendor itself, we can ask them to also track those.
It would just be nice to know because when you put in a big new system, you want to, if there's going to be a return on investment, certainly, you want to see that those efficiencies that you're going to get, we can show some kind of dollar number for that investment. Thank you.
Councilmember Levinson, Mayor, that is actually an expectation that I have as we move into this, is that we do track those efficiencies that we gain in the process, not only in this system, but also in the system that we talked, that Jim mentioned earlier in development services. And when we look at that, it will be both hard and soft dollars that we'll look at, and what it, the, the ability that it gives the community to engage and utilize the system in an easier way.
Are there studies of our size and complexities using this particular software or something similar to this?
Mayor, we're, we are in, currently in the middle of a confidential procurement process. So unfortunately, can't discuss the vendors specifically. But yes, many communities throughout Colorado, larger or smaller, use a variety of vendors, some of which have proposed to the city.
Okay, thank you.
That concludes my presentation. If there are any further questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Thank you.
Okay, Mayor and Council, Trace Malloy, the Budget Manager. So coming back then to other one-time items in the general fund budget, and in particular, the category other expenses with one-year commitment. So this chart that's up here right now is in your council communication. I realize it's a little hard to read up, up here. But what, really what we wanted to do was to take you through the changes from this category of one-time items in, in our 2012 budget, and how they changed and, and what they are now in our 2013 budget. Because we did make quite a bit of progress in moving a lot of these items into one, into ongoing. And so we wanted to, to point that out to you. So as Jim mentioned, as you can see up here, there are quite a few of those items that have been moved into ongoing. In particular, the, the most costly items is that contract tree maintenance and the contract right-of-way maintenance. So again, those are, have been moved into ongoing. There's a couple other items up here that were also moved into ongoing. We had one item in particular, the neutral zone item where the community services department found the safety. found the savings within their existing base budget to cover that item. So that one is now considered funded from ongoing as well. A couple of the items that were previously on the list in 2012, after we reviewed them again, we're classifying them as true long-time expenses. They're either a pilot program or they will have an end after this year. So those items are not showing up on this list as well. So it leaves three of the items that were on the list before that are still funded from one time in our 2013 budget. And then there's an additional, three more items though, that we did add to this list that as we were looking through them as expenses, they are expenses in 2012, they are also expenses in 2013. We just had determined this go-around that they really are ongoing-type expenses and so they are on this list. So that's the reason that we wanted to put these up here was to really go through those changes with you. Any questions on those?
Teresa, if I can add a couple of those that were pilot programs. As we look at this as staff, we debated about including them in the ongoing category, but one of the things that we didn't want to do is be presumptuous because council is actually due to evaluate those programs at the end of fiscal year 2013. And we felt like if we put that in ongoing, it changes the evaluation process as we look at it. So we wanted to keep those as truly one-time expenses because they are in their last year. Council can then evaluate that process as we move forward. But we felt like if we put it again in the ongoing category, then that would just change the evaluation process.
Okay, so we're gonna move into now the request for council one-time funding. So this falls under the category of the net one-time services or expenses that Jim was mentioning makes up $713,000 of our total one-time in the general fund. A big portion of that is this funding. So council, you have $350,000 in the proposed budget and you have requests that total $331,000 of that. You're gonna hear from some of those people this evening. I guess I would like to point out that when we're talking about the category, other expenses with one-year commitment, these type of items could theoretically fall within that category as well. So there could potentially be another 330-some thousand dollars of ongoing-type expenses that we're funding with one-time revenues. And in fact, some of these that are on this list were included in our ongoing budget at one point, probably prior to 2003 or so, I would say. So that's just another thing we need to keep in mind as we're moving forward in future The other thing I would point out is that we're not asking for council to give us direction on these tonight. However, if you'd like to give us direction on these tonight, you can, but it's not your last opportunity. You will have October 2nd meeting where we will come back and ask you for final directions. So that's when we would need to have your decisions on this funding as well as any other changes in our proposed budget.
Hi Teresa. Thank you, Mayor. You know, I've seen these one-time requests from council year after year. I'm glad we're getting our investment from RAC, the Regional Air Quality Council. I was very harsh with them last year. We are now seeing dividends of that. The question I have is the DDA, the lights, the event support and entertainment and support. Call me crazy, but I think this should come from their budget. I still don't understand why they keep coming to council for these requests. So if there's some answer to that.
Mayor Coombs, councilmember Santos, I don't necessarily have an answer. I did wanna, we do wanna point out though that Kimberly McKee couldn't be here tonight and we are going to be reviewing the DDA budget next week. And so we hoped to be able to discuss those three items at that point in time, but I think we should raise that question then.
Because it seems to me that not only should it maybe come from their budget, but from sponsorships as well. You know, again, I know a lot of these are great one-time requests and I don't have a issue with the majority of them, but when, when an agency has, you know, especially when they're getting tax dollars through the DDA TIF and then asking for more money from the city for things that, I don't know, it just seems very awkward. So I guess we'll have the discussion another time. Thanks.
So before we... Do you have something to add before I ask a question?
No, go ahead.
Okay. We've done this in the past. When we're looking at the funding for LCJP, some of the money that was requested was split with what we had as previous funding before the public safety tax passed. And then the funding request that was an increase was funded out of the tax. Does that, I'm looking at the asterisk on our page S92 and it says that... Okay, so that, so of the $180,000, the total amount's gonna be 200,000?
Correct.
And so only 180 is coming from this? And then the other 20 is somewhere in the public safety budget then?
So Mayor and councilmember Levinson, the other 20 would need to be added to the budget. It is not currently in the budget, but it would come from the public safety fund like it did in prior years.
So I'm just gonna try to find the letter. Okay, so if we, so do we need to make a motion tonight on that or do you wanna just wait until, you know, we're making motions on the other budget items?
If you would like to give us direction on that tonight, we will take it. However, we don't need it tonight. You can wait and do that at a future meeting. Absolutely, we will need it by October 2nd though.
And then when I was looking at some of the other items in the budget, like some of the items in probation and I noticed that some costs are going down for probation services. Is that at all due to the fact that there might be less offenders being tracked because of community justice programs or is there any influence or analyzation you have around why something seems to go down with probation and then...
So councilmember Levinson, are you referring to their actual budget in the budget document?
Yeah, I just noted that probation monitoring dropped $5,000. And then we also had a, it seems like a pretty hefty drop in surcharge on violations. So, yeah. So I don't know what that drop in the probation monitoring is attributed to.
So councilmember Levinson, those are, those are the revenues in the general fund? Those do not equally correlate to the expenses in the general fund. Those are just, those are the revenues. So I would have to say that the expenditures in the probation department, off the top of my head, I would say did not decrease. In fact, ongoing expenditures should have increased because we have a pay increase. There may be a bottom-line reduction if there was some one-time expenses in a prior year that we're not funding in 13. I would have to check on that. But what you're referring to are the revenues that we collect from those services.
So I'm just trying to see whether or not there's a connection in making the investment, an extra $20,000 in investment in this $180,000 in reduced cost somewhere else to the city that, and it doesn't look like there's a direct correlation. There may be, you know, some kind of data, but it's not part of the budget item here.
So the way that we project those revenues really is based on trending. So we look at how are we doing in those revenues up through basically July of this year? And then we'll base our projections for 13 on that. So we're seeing a decrease in court revenues overall and that's reflected in our 2013 budget.
So it seems like we've got an offset here where, you know, because maybe not as many people are going through the court system, we have less revenue, but then we're spending more revenue on community justice programs, which, you know, seems like we're hurting ourselves in some ways, but it's better for, I understand that the whole program is much better for the community. I'll weigh in to make a motion later on. I'll just let other people jump in.
Mayor, council, to answer that question, I think when we talked about the process that we're gonna go through in the budget, literally starting the moment that we get through this process, those are the type of questions that we're gonna look into and really start examining correlations between funding in programs and one program versus another. So that is part of the more in-depth analysis that we need to go through because I think that is information the council fundamentally needs as we continue moving through the financial issues that we're looking at.
Okay, so one other thing that I did wanna point out, attachment H, page S92 in your packet is a history of the council one-time dollars. So that's just informational item for you. And then attachment I, pages S93 to 107, is letters from the agencies that are asking for these funds. And one letter we've placed at your desk, we didn't receive it in time to make it into the packet, and that's the letter from the St. Brain Historical Society. So that one should have been at your desk this evening. And then another letter from Visit Longmont for their visitor center feasibility request. They've withdrawn that request from consideration for 13, which is why the numbers on the board here are different than the numbers that was placed in your council communication. So with that, we'll move into the agency requests for you. So I just wanna check, is someone from the council for the arts here?
Can we take a timeout, like a five-minute break?
Okay, Sandy, guess whenever you're ready.
Thank you. Mayor Coombs, members of council, Sandy, senior assistant city manager, and I'm actually helping out with the council for the arts request today. Reason being is as Teresa mentioned, that Kimberly McKee is gone today, so is Joanne Kurvich. They are actually together at a creative district conference. You may have heard that the Lama Downtown Development Authority's Creative District, or Arts Entertainment District, actually won state designation and the two of them are there. So Joanne just told me to refer to the letter from the council for the arts. And basically, they are asking for $10,000 to fund three different projects. One is the artists in residence, which actually brings local artists and gives them an ability to, to do some work around Longmont. The mini grants, which are used all the way through the community to try to bring arts and culture to our city, and the art enthusiast magazine, which is published, I believe, monthly and distributed all around town, as well as we're taking a look at some ways that we can distribute that more statewide. So they, on their behalf, they appreciate the funding that the city council has granted in the past. Their request this year is for $10,000. And if you have any questions, I can get them to Joanne to get back to you later.
All right. Thank you, Sandy.
Thank you.
Okay, and so up for Longmont Community Justice Partnership is Deb Wetzel. And as mentioned previously, this request is for $200,000, 180 from the general fund from this pot of money, 20,000 from the public safety fund.
Mayor Coombs, council members, thank you as always for your support for the Longmont Community Justice Partnership, LCJP, this year and previous years. I'd also like to say thank you to Amy and Priscilla and Henry for coming tonight to share their stories. It's always nice to hear another voice besides mine tooting the horn for restorative justice in Longmont. So I've handed you a packet that has three endorsement letters. One from the chief, Chief Butler, one from district attorney Stan Garnett, and one from the St. Brain Valley School District Superintendent Don Hadad. Our four of these founding leaders in our community are incredible supporters of our work and believers in restorative justice. So you'll have the opportunity to see their words, not listen to their stories tonight. The other piece is our 2011 annual report, which I'd like to share some highlights from. For those of you who are numbers people, this will be really exciting. For those of you who are stories people, I hope you got your needs met with the previous folks. So I just want to say that it's an honor on Patriots' Day of all days to be able to share, to use earlier terms, the return on investment that restorative justice brings to our community and making it safer and more civil for all of us. So highlights from 2011, we served 1,274 people in our community last year. It's a lot of people that had the opportunity to meet face-to-face and handle the conflict or the crime through this process of restorative justice rather than through the courts where someone else is usually their voice. We had 159 cases referred, which meant 262 offenders referred to our program. And 95% of those referrals came from the Longmont Police Department. So we're very fortunate, again, as Amy mentioned earlier in our partnership. That resulted in 131 processes, and of those 98% of the offenders who came through our program completed with a 7% recidivism rate last year. So as Henry mentioned, statewide, it's, I mean, nationwide, it's about 70% the recidivism rate, and in Boulder County, it's about 50%. So you have a lot to be proud of in Longmont by supporting restorative justice practices. I also want you to know that the citizens of Longmont volunteer and gave us 16, over 1,600 hours of volunteer service last year. We always need more trained volunteers, so if you or your friends or family are up for some incredible professional training and restorative justice service, we can always use more help. And just so you know, in 2012, we are on track to exceed the numbers from 2011. So that trend has been continuous over the la, I've been executive director for the Longmont Community Justice Partnership now for four years, and that trend has continued to happen every year since. The other piece that I want to share with you tonight is about our Restorative Practices in Schools program. This is a pilot program that's funded by a justice assistance grant that is due to finish next year. So this time next year, I'll be telling you how sad I am that that funding is going away. But this year, I'm really glad to tell you that in the 2010-11 school year, we had 100 students referred to the program and saved over 111 school days that year. This, the 2011-12 school year, we had 91 referrals and had over 80, we had 88 court referrals avoided. So you can see that our statistics in the Restorative Practices in Schools program are right in line with what we see in the community justice program. I could go on and on bragging, but I won't. I would be happy to answer any questions for you. And Priscilla is a member of our student team, and if you have questions about the student team, we have 13 trained student facilitators. She's one of the five bilingual student facilitators that we have. And as she said, we are so grateful to all of you and the city of Longmont for the continued support that we get to keep Longmont Community Justice Partnership and restorative justice a part of our community. It's a great honor to serve this community. Thank you.
Thank you, Deb. Any questions? Councilmember Bagley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I've, I've just got a quick question. So the 159 cases that were referred and the 262 offenders, is that limited, were those all the cases that were appropriate, or are we limited to funding?
That is such a great question. It's both.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's yes and. So I'm sure that Amy would tell you what, that are, we are beyond capacity at this point. So we can't take any more cases at this point. And if we could hire more staff and have more space, we would be thrilled to take more spa, more cases. So the Longmont Police Department definitely is very critical in the cases that they select to refer to us. We have requirements that the offender take responsibility and that the victim is willing for it to come through restorative justice. So with those two things that are consideration, I know that our officers and the liaisons really look carefully at the cases that they refer.
I'm going to ask you to, this is a tough question, and I wouldn't, I mean, if you just don't know, just say, I don't know, I don't want to guess. But I'm going to ask you to guess. Of the total, and this is somewhat self-serving considering I, I practice criminal law, the, of the total, I mean, if, so if you're doing 159 cases, 262 offenders, if you had an infinite amount of money, how many more cases would be appropriate to land in the restorative justice project?
I don't know.
Okay, all right, I was curious.
You know, I don't know if Commander Perkins or if Chief Butler have a better sense of that. I feel like, you know, if we were given the opportunity to really scrutinize the, the cases, all of the cases that come through, we would probably find more. But I can tell you for sure that at this point with our one full-time coordinator and our one program manager, we don't have the capacity to receive any more than we are currently. We would love to take more cases.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Whit?
Thank you. I just want to tell Priscilla how impactful your, your comments were. And it is very rare to find somebody who's able to stand up and say, this is what happened and this is what I did and, and, but I grew from it and I'm better than I was. And it takes a lot of courage and guts to do that. And you have my respect. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Deb.
Okay, Mayor, up next is the Regional Air Quality Council, and you previously heard from Meg Alderton. I just want to check and see if she has anything follow-up to say or to see if council has any questions for her.
Councilmember Whit?
I, I believe I've heard you also at Dr. Cog. And a lot of times when it's discussed at Dr. Cog about funding for, for the RAC, a lot of times people say, you know, I just don't feel comfortable spending that much money on pamphlets. Can you answer, this is not being spent on pamphlets, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, yes. All right. And so just want to clarify, it's not pamphlets?
Yep. Not pamphlets.
Okay, awesome. Pamphlets have their place, but, thanks.
Sure.
Okay, and next we have Sister Cities and Sam Saifi.
Mayor Coombs, good, good evening, members of council. Sam Saifi, resident of Longmont, Longmont Sister Cities, has been around now for 22 years. And we are requesting approximately the same amount of budget that we requested last year. You have been kind enough to help us for the last two decades, and we would like to, for you to continue supporting us. If there's any question, I'll be happy to answer.
Councilmember Whit?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I just want to compliment you on your letter requesting funds because it did break out exactly what those funds are used for, and I find that very helpful. And I also enjoy serving on, on your, on your board. So thanks for being here.
Glad to have you with us. I think it's a great program. Thank you, Mayor. Good evening.
Thank you.
Okay, Mayor, the Symphony Orchestra, you had heard from Carol Minelli earlier this evening. I believe she is left for the, this evening. So DDA, as Jen mentioned, will cover next week. LAEC, John Cody, if he wants to say a few words.
Mayor, Councilmember, Council, John Cody, president of Longmont Area Economic Council. This will be the third year of a three-year program to do some enhanced marketing. You may have read in today's paper about one of the efforts we're undertaking this year. We will have a continuation, hopefully, of that program next year, as well as some continuation of our existing efforts and some new things we have done in the past. We'll get into all the details, I assume, at the, at the contract time. But I'm here to answer any questions that you might have.
Councilmember Bagley?
Uh, thank you, Mayor Coombs. I just had one quick question. I, I don't have a history here prior to November of last year, but I noticed in the packet that there was a statement saying, "The city council, the LAEC, agreed that additional funding requests would not take place for a period of three years." What does that statement mean? Where did it come from? I was surprised. I'd never heard of it before I read today's packet. And then what exactly will the $20,000 be used for?
Well, I'm confused about the first statement that you made.
I, I don't know, that's what I'm asking. I don't know.
I didn't see it, so I can't comment on it. Uh, here goes Brad.
Evening, Mayor Coombs, members of council, Brad Power, director of the Economic Development Department. Previously, council in a prior budget round requested that LAEC, given the fact that the budget was constrained in prior years, that if they could hold their funding steady for a period of time, that that would be advisable. And the LAEC agreed to do that for a period of three years.
Okay, so that's a pretty simple answer. And then the second part, what are we going to use that $20,000 for?
Well, as I mentioned, we'll probably continue, it's a little early to say, but we'll probably continue in our email campaign. Some of the new things that are going to do next year is we're going to attend a conference of site selectors. We bring them in. As a matter of fact, next week, we will have site selectors from around the country and as part of a regional effort. But they, last year, also established a conference that, for them, but that they allow people to attend. So we'll be doing that to make direct contact with representatives of potential companies who are interested in relocating or expanding. We are going to kick around the idea of possibly doing a site selection conference as part of a smaller region, maybe Laramo, Weldon, and Boulder, well, at least our portion of Boulder County. So, so those are some of the new things. We will continue to do our webpage enhancements that we do every year and to track what goes on in terms of our marketing that occurs on the internet. So there's a variety of activities that we do basically to increase our outreach during this period. I don't know if that answers your question.
It, it definitely does answer it. Thank you, Mr. Cody.
You bet. Okay, I don't see any other questions. Thank you, John.
Thank you.
And finally, this evening, we have Randy Alberg from the St. Brain Historical Society for you.
Mayor, members of council, Randy Alberg, Longmont native, longtime member of the Board of Directors of the St. Brain Historical Society. I got a few prepared remarks so I can keep this brief, but our request is for $7,500, and you didn't get the letter until tonight, and I apologize for that. There was 1,500 on the board, so maybe it's hidden someplace else in your budget, because historically, if I can use that word, we've been receiving assistance from the city for, since 1998. So I don't need an answer to that question tonight. I just want to have the number we're looking for before you. So we do appreciate the help that you've provided us in the past. As noted in that letter, we use these monies to offset a portion of our lawn maintenance and utilities costs at Old Mill Park, historic Hoover Home and the Hoover Farmstead. There's details of the cost of those items in that letter. I want to take just a minute to mention a couple of the things that we do that I think provides significant historic education and historic interpretation for Longmont. At Old Mill Park, in conjunction with the St. Brain Valley Schools, each year, we host every third grader in the district for an event known as Pioneer Days. We also partner with the Longmont Museum and Cultural Center for a program known as Seekers, Searchers, and Settlers. These programs focus on presenting Longmont as it was when we were founded in 1880 and settled in 1871. Hoover Home, I think, in my opinion, is a landmark structure on Longmont's Hoover Street corridor. We provide many tours, complete with docents for visitors that tell people about the life and times of Charles and Catherine Hoover. We can even send Charles and Catherine to your event as a program. And lastly, the Hoover Farmstead, which I'm particularly fond of, is an interpreted site, complete with original structures, including a grain mill, which highlight the innovative farming procedures that Charles Hoover had in the 1930s. We believe that we provide a valuable partnership for the city and for our school district, and your help has been invaluable in the past for our budget, and we look forward to your continued support. Thank you.
Councilmember Whit?
I have questions about Old Mill Park.
Yes, ma'am.
I have a very close relative who lives in a house right next to it, and she's very concerned of that, of the upkeep, and...
I looked a little, I'm listening.
No, go ahead. You just...
So, we answered that question a couple of years ago in terms of a budget shortfall that we had. We did do away with a part-time staff person that we had there and probably made a poor decision to not invest as much time and energy. So a year ago, Johnny St. Brain did an article about the park and how it was brown and ugly. This one, from just a few weeks ago... This one, from just a few weeks ago, shows it green and bright and the headline says that the weeds are gone and the grass is green. What we've done is we have gone back to the old-fashioned method. We have more volunteer hours going in there. We have a member of our board, Galen Miller, our park chairman, who has reconnected with garden clubs and our Longmont Rotary Interact Club. We are partnering with Rotary for a $5,000 grant to improve our sprinkler system. And so we have revitalized the park and I don't know when your neighbor last looked at it, but...
That, it was, it was last summer that she was very concerned. And so, that is great that you can report that, that has been rectified. Thank you so much.
You bet.
Councilmember Santos.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't have really a question for you, Randy. Teresa, the S-92, it shows 1,500. Was, is that a mistype or is the one really supposed to be a seven? Just really small.
So, Mayor and council, so, as Mr. Alberg pointed out, his request is really for much more than what is on here. What I will tell you is that this, the 1,500 is just the incremental amount that is not already included in the ongoing base budget in the parks' maintenance.
So, the other 6,000 is, is...
Is in the parks' maintenance, ongoing budget.
That's the answer, Dave.
There you go.
All right.
Wanted to make sure that that was...
Thank you.
Fully understood.
All right. Again, thank you very much.
Thank you, Randy.
So, that concludes our one-time, general fund one-time presentation. I just wanted to give council one more opportunity, if you have questions on, on the list of any one-time items while we still have staff here.
Councilmember Bagley.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Just, just so I understand the math, so, is the $350,000 that is unallocated pending city council direction, this plus $65,205, or is the $62,205 included in the 350? So what I'm saying is, so the total of 368 plus the 6,000 that we left off for Mr. Alberg's request, is it, so is that 360, or 374? Are we over 24 grand or are we under by 40?
So, Mayor and council, so you're going to be under. So you have $350,000 in the general fund. Your general fund request total, 331,000.
Okay.
How we got to the 368,000 was the additional 20,000 for LCJP that if council directs, that we funded, it will be funded from the public improvement fund.
Absolutely.
And then there was the Visit Longmont, $17,000 that is now off the table.
Okay. What, what do you mean, off the table?
They pulled their request. They, they are no longer asking for those funds.
Okay, so then that would just basically mean, at the end of the day, the city council contingency fund drops down to about 40,000. Am I, is that how that works? Because what is this, the, in addition, the city council also has $65,205 remaining in the fund balance portion that is designated as future council one-time expenditures.
So, Mayor and council, so that is, as Jim was referring to, there is a portion of the general fund fund balance that is not part of this budget, that has $60,000 remaining. If council would like to use that for anything, you have that discretion, but it is not included in any of these numbers.
So, that's different than the council contingency fund?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. Your council contingency fund for 2013 starts at, at 60,000.
Okay, thank you.
If council chooses, one option that, that you have done in the past is, out of your 350,000, once you allocate those dollars to the agencies, if there's money left over, we have put that in your council contingency in the past.
Or we could put it in the reserve to make up for the...
Or you can put it in reserves.
5.7 to 8, 8%. You're, you're going to get my vote on that, Jim.
Okay, so, no other questions then? Okay, so then we're going to move into economic development and Brad Power.
Thank you, Teresa.
Good evening again, Mayor Coombs, members of council. I want to spend a few minutes reviewing some of our proposals for our economic development program funding for 2013 and I wanted to cover three areas. One of the things that we wanted to do this evening is to give you some of our metrics associated with our programs before we review the funding levels for 2013. So I'll do that in a minute and we'll talk about the programs that we fund as a department and then I'll conclude very briefly with a description of some of the requests from our economic partner agencies. I wanted to share with you some of the trend data that we're seeing in some of our more established economic development programs. And I think it's safe to say that across the board, the trend is up in terms of both the interest from the community and actual utilization from the community of our programs. For the benefit of the audience, our Longmont Economic Gardening Initiative has actually grown tremendously over the last couple of years. We've, we've put new emphasis and renewed emphasis on that type of program that works one-on-one with people who are developing business plans and businesses, all the way to very large workshops and programs that we sponsor, one of which was just concluded this evening. You see the, the growth in the participants in our workshops as well. Our startup grant, we are a little bit trended downward this year, but we have some plans to work with some businesses prior to the end of the year, so that one will probably be steady in terms of what it was in 2011. The Small Business Learning Program is actually, we are expecting more utilization of that in the future, even though it's been utilized fairly decently, because we've been able to work with our co-funder and lower the interest rate considerably in that one. The Business Improvement Grant, the same thing, that is trending upward as our tourism grants in terms of the monetary value. So we wanted to provide that as context by saying that most of the programs that we have, in fact, all the programs that we've, we are administering are experiencing growth. I see that there is a question.
Councilmember Finley.
Thank you. So we see that the, the utilization of the, um, uh, different options is going up. Do we have any, uh, we, I watched the video, saw the individuals who participated in the different programs and, and so we have some anecdotal evidence. Do we have any numbers as far as, because of these programs, this much was added to the community? In sales tax or...
Sure.
Do we have those numbers?
Mayor Coombs, member, and councilmember Rip, we are tracking data relative to the performance of the businesses. So there's, on the one hand, there's the intrinsic value of a lot of the programs, which is occupying space and supporting new business and, and new employment growth. We are tracking the financial performance, but the reporting of that is a little bit challenging because of the narrowness that we operate in in terms of what we can disclose about individual businesses. So we are looking for ways going forward so that we can start to report publicly some of that analysis. I can say that, given the economy, and honestly, we haven't been 100% in, in, in these programs. We have had some that received some of our help that, that quite frankly, didn't make it. That is a very small number, but we are working with folks who are taking risks and we are joining in that at a modest level, but we're doing that as well as a community because the council has assessed the, the value of providing that leg up for folks who have business ideas for, for this community.
Councilmember Finley.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I am always the, the first one to help, helping businesses and especially small businesses in our community. But when I looked at the Economic Vitality, the big book, the budget book, and I look at the total budget of $672,000 and there's 3.25 FTEs, it just seems kind of large to me. I, it just seems, I have a hard time wrapping my, my head around, we're helping, you know, our businesses, which is great, but it seems like the cost is a little out of whack to me.
Mayor Coombs, councilmember Finley, the FTE count in Economic Vitality is a little bit misleading in terms of thinking about those three, I think it's three and a half, FTE positions are solely engaged in these activities, they are not. So the positions are the Economic Vitality Manager, the Redevelopment Manager is also classified in this area and, and you obviously know what's going on with that work in the community and the scale of that work right now. Shifting back to Economic Vitality, we have, based on the fact that with recession, some of our development activities, especially as related to some of the comprehensive planning and long-term looks, we've actually shifted one of our senior planners over to help facilitate this work because it's actually been demanded in terms of the time commitment. We also have a halftime commitment from one of our staff planners as well. We're in a situation where we've made the decision going forward in these programs that, given the visibility that they have needed to have and the emphasis within the department that we've wanted them to have, the, the FTE that's dedicated this and also the Redevelopment Manager reflects fairly senior positions in the department and we've made that choice to really try to grow these, these programs in the community.
So, Mayor, council, if I could just also add, the 250 line item, that's the professional contracted services in that budget, is $226,000. That is these programs that Brad was just referring to, as well as LAEC, it's leggy, it's, so it's a lot of contract dollars as well.
Councilmember Levinson.
Thank you, Mayor. And Brad, would you say that the characterization of these kind of programs, it's very labor-intensive for these startup, you know, the, to help startup businesses with this type of programming?
Mayor Coombs, councilmember Levinson, I think that is an exact characterization of the work that we try to do with people. We try to expose our staff with the professionals that we do contract with so that they can have that next leg up of what's next and so that when our professional staff are backing out, or our contracted staff, primarily a small business development center, they're not here every day. We are, and so we can provide that follow-up, which is so critical when somebody's starting out.
And a lot of this stuff, as it seems a lot in business, becomes a matter of relationships and people, you know, going, building confidence with the city. I mean, the, the YouTube presentation had some very glowing things to say about people having been drawn in and convinced that this was the right place for them to set up their business because of that kind of time investment to have staff members there, you know, to answer a phone call. I mean, if, if someone calls the city to talk about a business assistance program and no one's there to answer the phone because they're only there 10 hours a week, that's not going to get us very far with businesses connecting with the city. So, I, I feel that it's worth the investment in, in the staff time. And also, as you pointed out, these staff have a higher level of expertise, they're not just entry-level staff members, that they have some professional certification, certification as well, don't they?
Uh, some of them do, yes.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Mayor, if I, Mayor, council, if I can add, taking you back to the presentation that Jim made last week, when we talked about the positions in, in part of that future look, two of the positions that we're talking about in, in, in this budget were actually highlighted in the previous discussion in that they were funded 100% via the ATF or the automatic transfer. Automatic transfer, right? Admin transfer. I'm, I'm mixing cities now. The admin transfer fee. What that means is, is we continue moving in the budget process, that is something that we're going to have to untangle as we look to the future and that was part of that $3 million number that Jim went over in terms of what we need to really work on to reset, so that is going to be part of future discussions.
Thank you, Harold. Councilmember Bagley.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I guess my, I can under, I see the work you guys are doing with the mall redevelopment, et cetera, I can see why we need the people. My concern lies elsewhere and, uh, this is a question to resolve my concern. I see that there were a total of six businesses, startups, that utilized the Business Startup Grant and the Business Improvement Grant. So my question is twofold. One, where does this money come from? And two, could you give me some examples of what types of businesses we're helping? Sure. I, I'm, I'm torn between helping businesses, but also, my experience teaches, yeah, help, I mean, like, the, the, the work that we're doing with, that you're doing with the Longmont Economic Gardening Initiative, similar to, you know, an incubator, you know, mentoring good, but part of the business startup process is proving to the, you know, the capitalistic market that your idea will function and work rather than going to government. So where's the money coming from and can you give me some examples of what types of these six companies the funds helped?
Mayor Coombs, councilmember Bagley, while I'm talking about the first point, I want to ask Doug Benny, our Economic Vitality Manager, to avail themselves to talk about some of the examples. The, the funding is general fund. All of the proj, all of the projects or all the programs, with the exception of the Small Business Learning Program, which is funded by an allocation from our Community Development Block grant funding. The buyer councils have decided that the, the community priority relative to supporting this type of business development endeavor was worthy of the general fund investment, so they are all general fund dollars.
Okay.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, Doug Benny, Economic Development Manager. In reference to your question about the Business Improvement Grant, some of those companies include Left Hand, Sun Rose Cafe, The Rib House, those come to mind. As far as the startup grant too, another point to keep in mind on the utilization of that program, there are several, probably five to seven, that are still in the process, they just haven't concluded. And those generally go, obviously, for startup companies. There are several on Main Street, Simply Bulk took advantage of that, Sun Rose Cafe took advantage of that. There are some in Harvest Junction that have taken advantage of it. So there's, there's a lot of small businesses, the types are anything from restaurants to small retail businesses. Well, they have to be retail in both grant programs and they have to be storefront retail. So not only do we give them a little bit of a reimbursement, but they're occupying space, so it helps reduce vacancies. And another point to put towards that is we require, in the Business Startup Grant anyway, they have to attend an approved business training class and they have to submit an acceptable business plan. So, we think that gives them a, a pretty good foundation for success.
I guess, so my question is, is this money that we're spending that is necessary for these businesses to actually continue or is this more along the lines of, you know, they don't need it, but they're just taking advantage of it?
Well, in my...
Because the companies you named, they don't str, I was picturing, I guess I'm a little surprised, I was expecting more like, you know, there's a, you know, family out of work, they had an entrepreneurial idea to start a window cleaning business, or they had a, you know, whereas, I mean, the companies you rattled off weren't necessarily, I mean, they're, they seem to be doing pretty good.
Well, that, that's true, but there's two different goals with each of those grant programs. The startup grant program, both programs are reimbursements, first of all, so we're not giving anyone money upfront, so they have to perform, they have to make the investment to begin with. And the second point is, we don't limit it to those that are just need-based. So what's happening with the Business Improvement Grant is they're making permanent structural improvements to the facility. Those are improvements that will stay with the facility, so even if that company goes out of business, it makes the space more leasable or sellable to the next company. So, that's the way I would look at it, I think that's the way we look at it. We require a good foundation, as I mentioned, for success, hopefully. You'd be surprised with the number of companies that do not have a business plan, so getting them, you know, the right start is important. And again, it's a reimbursement, it has to go for certain costs. In the case of a startup grant, it's for legitimate startup costs, so it's related with the, you know, the costs that incur in starting the business. The Business Improvement Grant, again, it's not for things such as signage or painting, it's for actual structural improvements, flooring, air conditioning, things that, that make an improvement to the building.
So you're saying the companies you named, the funds they received were actually when they were starting?
Again, there's two different grant programs. On the Business Startup Grant, yes, the business in our opinion, I mean, in our definition of new, is a business that either opened this year or 2011. The reason for that is when we launched the Startup Grant Program, we launched it late, I think in 2009 or '10. So we made it a two-year window for the definition of new. For the Business Improvement Grant, they have to be in business for two or more years, so it is an existing business and that was at council's request a few years ago to do an incentive program for existing retail businesses.
I guess, I guess my, my real question is, are the, is if it's coming out of general fund, is this $60,000 that's, that are spent putting into our reserves? Or, I mean, if it's helping business, we don't take it away, but my question is, is it doing what we intend it to do?
In my opinion, I think so, because if you look at the trend lines, as Brad mentioned... In my opinion, I think so, because if you look at the trend lines, as Brad mentioned, the programs are, the usage is increasing every year.
It's free money. I mean, as people become aware of it, I'd use it, too. I mean, if I could figure out how to argue that I've got a retail front, I mean, the wheels are spinning.
Well, there's some limitations and there's some requirements, definitely. You have to have a storefront retail location on a ground floor, so it's not intended for everyone. So, I mean, we're emphasizing retail because that's important. We got the programs put into place because theoretically, the sales tax that's generated, part of that's coming back to the city, so over time, the programs are paying for themselves. So I think it's a pretty good investment.
Okay.
But it's also an advantage for Longmont that other cities along the French range don't even offer grants, so.
I mean, and for what it's worth, I like it when a staff member says that, meaning that a lot of times I'll ask, "What do you think?" And they'll go, "Well, I don't set policy. I want to hear what you guys think." So, thank you.
If I can jump in, I think this is also part of the discussion as we talk about retooling and resetting the budget. One of the things that I have heard very clearly from council through various discussions is, how do we measure what we do as an organization and what does that impact? And I think that is, not that I think, that is something that we're going to get into as we start retooling the budget and bringing that back to council where we are really taking tangible measurements. So when council asks a question of, "What does this mean?", we're actually going to be able to provide data to go deep into, are we achieving the goals that council has set for us and are we making progress in that? So that's going to be part of this overall evaluation that we're going through, so we can start combining data with the anecdotal evidence that we have. And it's difficult for government organizations in terms of how you measure and what you measure, but I think that's going to be a critical point in terms of what we do over the coming year to really get those measurements and provide you, provide council with the information that you all need in the decision-making process.
Councilmember Santos.
Thank you, Mayor. Brad, and forgive me if you haven't gotten to it yet, but the $29,000 for tourism grants? I still have questions whether or not we should be doing that. We have a Visitors Association that we give 90% of the lodgers' tax funds to. Why are we still doing tourism grants when we have a Visitors Association?
Mayor Coons, Mayor Potem Santos, I will counter Councilmember Bagley's compliment to Doug, I'll probably, as ireal will be directed to me, that is clearly a policy decision that you very clearly could make. I know it's come up in recent years as well.
Well, it started, I think, at 75%, then it increased to 90%, and, you know, I would be in favor of 100%. I'm not making any motions or anything like that, I'm just, you know, looking for discussion.
I think one of the things that we've endeavored to do in the time where the allocation has been directed to the city to control the expenditures, is that we've been trying to coordinate as closely as possible with Visit Longmont, LDDA, and other organizations that benefit from the grants, but I do think you raise an interesting question.
Well, and part of it is that, and Doug, I know you've done a wonderful job with these tourism grants, but is that really his job? I would say no, that's not his job. His job is, you know, Leggie, you know, helping small businesses start up. Tourism, we have a, again, we have a Visitors Association, which we appoint three members of the board, three or four members of the board, two, and we have one council member that's on it. I, in my opinion, it's time to let them run with supervision, of course, and that's something that I've talked to Doug about regarding the contract. I like to see more measurements, kind of like the LAEC. We get quarterly reports from LAEC regarding what they're doing and things of that nature. I'd like to see that from Visit Longmont, but that's another discussion for the, during the contract phase. But, you know, again, I'm just stimulating discussion, I would be in favor of giving them 100%.
Councilmember Samori.
Thank you, Mayor Coons. Going back to the Leggie Program, just so that there's no misinterpretation about how much money these businesses get. When we first put it in place three years ago, it was as an incentive to get retailers out of their homes to use space that was available and empty. And we said we would give them $2,000, but for that $2,000, they have to spend the money first, so they're committed. It's not just we give them $2,000 and they can do whatever they want. It's reimbursed and it's only for specific things. So if they had to renovate the building or get supplies or equipment for the businesses that they were starting, they would get some of that money back. And that showed a commitment on their part, and again, they're monitored, they had to go through special training and they had to have a business plan. And as far as the Business Improvement, then we thought, well, we have a lot of existing businesses that could grow but may not be growing or may not be spending money, so we came up with that Business Improvement Grant, and they get a percentage of the total cost. So they're not getting money for the full project. I think they get only up to 25%, isn't that right, Doug? So if the, if the cost is $100,000 to make improvements, they get $25,000 reimbursed. Not that we've ever given anybody that much money. So the intent was to, A, improve the facilities, maybe create more jobs, and eventually, the city gets the money back from the sales revenues that are being generated from those businesses. Whereas if they stayed in their home doing it over the internet, you wouldn't see any of that money.
Mayor Coons? Go ahead.
If I could just slightly clarify, Councilmember Samori's recent comment about the Business Improvement Grant, the actual funding level is 25% of the project or up to a maximum of $7,500. It's not 25% of the overall project.
Okay, so it is capped?
It is.
Councilmember Whit.
Thanks. Two things. First of all, I have to say, I participated in the Leggie Program. I, I want to try my hand one of these days. I want to open up a candy store in downtown Longmont. And I got to sit down for an hour and talk to Doug and realize that now's not the time for me to be doing that. So it was very helpful, it saved me a lot of time and effort after talking with him that I realized, hmm, I need to put more thought into this. So I participated in this, very helpful. As far as the Startup Grant and the Business Improvement Grant, I believe when we proposed those, we were at the height of the recession, are we out of the height of the recession? I'm not sure. But we, there was a real strong desire on council at that time to acknowledge that we were having a hard time in Longmont and it was, it was a response to the economic situation at that time. That being said, you have to be so careful with these things because so often, they end up looking like corporate welfare. So we have to judge the, the need, and we'll assess that going on, but, but I do want to say, Economic Gardening Initiative, I was impressed.
Councilmember Levison.
I think you have to look at these programs and look at the dollar amounts and then some of the perspective. If you've got an economic gardening program or a startup grant and they go out and buy material, they're paying use tax, they're, they're going to generate sales taxes, Doug pointed out. But the other thing, when I go out into the wider world, people are just absolutely blown away that we have the depth and breadth of the programs that we have. There are not that many cities, I mean, that, I was in Nashville recently this summer, I don't think even Nashville, and they're promoting any kind of business anytime, anywhere. They don't have this kind of depth of programs. And so I think it's a feather in our cap that when, on the YouTube video, people that were helped said, you know, "I'm really going to stay here in Longmont. This is what made the difference for me. Can you put a dollar amount, I mean, you know, could you say of that $50,000, that person being out there on YouTube saying that statement, is that worth the $1,000? Is it worth $2,000? For somebody who has a successful business and then talks to their friend who wants to start a business and, and they don't start it in Westminster or Thornton or Northland or Denver, they start it in Longmont. So I guess that you can't ever really look at the multiplier effect. The other part of it is, when there's access to capital through the use of CDVG money, there is a tie to employment. So people that are in that CDVG qualified employment category, you know, will have, there will be jobs created, and we need jobs. We need jobs that are, you know, $15 to $20 an hour jobs, and, you know, with doing that investment in, in helping with that lending program, has a business expand and hire somebody and they're going to stay on, then there's one less person, I mean, there's one more person, rather, who's got money in their pocket to spend in the grocery store or the clothing stores or somewhere else. And that comes back as a, a sales tax effect to us also. So I'm thinking that this is a good investment for a lot of reasons. You know, I frankly, I would like to see a little bit more money going to partnership with the Small Business Development Center. I know it would be a feather in our cap if we could actually get a full-fledged office here in Longmont. And I know that's extra money, but I think it might even have a bigger effect to have more access to those businesses, services here when we contract with SPTC.
Councilmember Santos.
Thank you, Mayor, and just to go back to what Councilmember Whit said, Councilmember Bagley, when this, yes, almost four years ago, so, when the deep part of the recession, you know, I don't think we're better off four years later, and it's actually to help these businesses start up and stay here in Longmont, as well as actually helping those, because we did get a request and some existing businesses were very upset that we didn't have anything to be able to offer them to expand. Mountain Snake and, I believe, Ace Hardware, well, it's a family-run business, it's still a larger chain, but they, we've used one of those grants to expand. Doug, am I, no? Well, I know that they were, they did ask, and they did, they did ask about that, so, you know, as Councilmember Whit said, at the lowest part of the recession, which, you know, are we better off four years later? Probably not. But can we still potentially help those businesses stay here in Longmont? And those that are starting out and those that have existed for a while, it's not really free money, because as Doug's mentioned, there's a whole lot of, you know, there's classes they have to take, there's business plan, you name it. They get run through quite a bit to have access to that funding.
Councilmember Samori.
Shifting to tourism.
Big shift?
Yeah. I would also support giving 100% of the money to Visit Longmont, when and if we decide to do that. And just in case Joe Ward leaves early tonight, I know he's still here, it's his birthday this week, I believe.
Councilmember Levison.
So I don't support shifting the lodger's tax 100% to the Visitors Association at this point. Doug, can you tell us a little bit about who's applied for those tourism grants? I mean, in my opinion, it's nice to have a little pot of money that if you have an opportunity and there's not a way to help somebody, that this little pot of money actually might seal the deal.
So this year, I think we allocated $20,000, our budgeted $20,000, not knowing what the actual revenue generation was going to be. A large part of that went towards the Downtown Summer Concert Series, as it has for the last three years. Other applicants that received funding were the Coloradans, the G Night event, and I'm sorry, the other, there was four grant applications. I mentioned three, I can't recall the fourth. Oh, the fourth was Longmont Council of the Arts and a series of programs that they had that they're just concluding with visiting artists. Most of those grants were small, the majority, as I mentioned, went towards the Downtown Summer Concert Series, and that's kind of what, initially, when it was put into place at the 75%, the discretion was given to the Economic Development Manager or my position to use it for tourism-related activities. We were instructed or thought it was a good idea to set up a grant program, so it wasn't just handing money out. So there is a grant program where they have, again, this is a reimbursement as well, so they have to do a report at the end of their event, kind of estimating room nights, local spending, attendance, their marketing budget has to be included, so we see how they spent their funds. So that's the way we're currently operating with the Tourism Grant Program.
And these grants that we give out, they don't fully fund any one event or anything?
Absolutely not.
Okay, all right. Well, and I just--
Except for, well, not even the Downtown Summer Concert Series, that was about less than 50% of the cost.
And I just recall from when we were visiting with GE Management recently, that their comment was that it's nice to have events when they have people coming for training out of town and are going to be here for a long amount of time. It's nice to have community events that they can go to. So I feel comfortable with the justification with the Summer Concert Series. If somebody is here visiting for business, that, you know, they're here and there's a concert, it's an additional amenity, and I think that there is a, there is room in the spectrum of what we can use that money for to do something like this. And especially, you know, Coloradans, they were, they've been a fantastic draw, and I know that for, in the car community, once people start coming, they'll, they'll come additional weekends. And so it's not, you know, I guess you can always ask the questions, well, you know, would the Visitors Association set aside, you know, 10% of their money to do this kind of stuff? I don't know. In the future boards, they may or may not, but again, to have a little pool of money where something comes up that's going to make a difference with getting somebody here, I think we still need to have that flexibility.
Mayor, if I may ask a clarifying question, because I've heard two things in the discussion. Is the, so when we look at the $29,000, are we saying the $29,000, or was counting, and maybe need to be directed at Councilmember Santos and Councilmember Samori, but were we saying that the $29,000 is directed to Visit Longmont to use as they wish? Or were we saying the $29,000 is directed to Visit Longmont to use for this purpose? Because I've heard both sides of this discussion, and that was wanting to clarify that in terms of what you were asked, what you were recommending.
Councilmember Bagley.
Thank you, Mayor Coons. That was actually my question. And so, tying into that, so the 10% that we'd be giving up is $29,000, correct? And then the question becomes, are they going to use it for tourism grants? Or would they be free to use it for the $17,000 feasibility study? Would they be able to, what would the intention be? I mean, what's the purpose other than just, it's no longer our headache for our economic development team to figure out what to do with the money? And so that's, that was one. And then the other comment was, going along with what you said, Harold, earlier, I'm all for the anecdotal evidence that we've heard expressed tonight on council regarding the grants and wanting to help people, the recession, et cetera, but I just, in general, feel uncomfortable whenever a government body, local, state, federal, gives money when there's no tie or data to link what we're doing with the end result. And so I would encourage the city, I don't know if we need to give them direction or whatever, but it sounds like Harold's already on it, you know, to figure out a way to link what we're doing with, are we accomplishing the result? And we could go through the budget, I'm sure, I mean, we're talking about this, and I'm sorry, Brad, that we're kind of picking on your department and kind of taking it apart, but in general, when we spend money, the question I think needs to be, is it effective? So, I mean, there's my ideological question and statement for the evening, but back to your question, Mayor Potem Santos, what would then, and Councilmember Samori, what would your ideas be for, I mean, do we just give up the money and they can do what they want? Or would the idea be to turn the tourism grants over to LAVA?
Councilmember Santos.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the question. Joe Ward, come on down. To talk about the Coloradans-- To talk about the Coloradans and, uh, um, you know, what I, what I find difficult is that we have a one-stop shop in, technically in theory, at the DSC for permits and things of that nature. Shouldn't we have a one-stop shop for, uh, bringing visitors to town? So Joe, do you guys do grants? At present, Councilmember Santos in, in here and members of council, it's my second time to address you, so please, my formality, I'll work on. Um, thanks. I would say, at the moment, we don't, because there is one in place with the city. I professionally and personally believe that a good tourism program does need to have some grant support. Whether ultimately we decided it's ten percent or different, I think that's something to discuss with the board. Um, and right now, it's very well managed by the city. So I can see the question about, is it just in the right spot? But for us, you know, Doug manages it very well, the city's been great, there is stringent requirements as far as projecting and going year to year on how is this moving forward? I think we're proposing, and I think I talked about some of this in the video with you as well, that I presented, or that we presented, and more about performance measurements for us, to where you can hold us accountable more in ways that come back to the numbers to address Councilman Bagley's point. Because really does need, I believe it needs to be about return on investment. And if you invest two fifty in this, in our organization, or three hundred, can we get it to a point where we're bringing five hundred back and a million back? So three to one, four to one in the future, but we need to be able to prove that. And I think that that's what we need to work with, with the city, to get to that point. And if the city desires a grant program that we do, we'd be, I would imagine, you know, Doug Benny would be invited to be on that committee as well, as I'm on the committee presently that makes those decisions on grants as well. So I think it's a part of the cooperation between the city, and we certainly would respect any decision that you made.
And the conversations we've had, you, you have working relationships with the DVA and Kimberly and-
Oh, without a doubt. I think that's been one of our biggest gains in the last seven, eight months since I've been here, is just so all those doors have been opened. I mean, Harold, you know, Mr. Dominguez has invited me to be-
Call you Harold?
Okay, cool. Harold has invited me to regularly sit on the, you know, his department meetings weekly, and that's part of, you know, for us, going back to this request that's come up, is to our withdrawing it, is to understand really the situation the city's in financially and to try to get more respect for that and realize and say, wait a minute, we're part of the same team and we're going to have an ownership mentality about the funds that we're entrusted with.
So the downtown concerts, did you help with the Coloradans as well?
Yes.
Okay. Again, you know, and again, nothing against Doug, I think Doug does a fantastic job with the grants. But when you're looking for, when someone's looking to look at, uh, come to town for tourism, they're going to look for the Visitors' Association. If they're looking to book a, a, uh, an event here, they're going to go to the Visitors' Association. The last thing that they would think of is going to the city. So while I'm not going to make a motion tonight, I, I probably will, and probably, and what I'd like, also like to take back to your board, is that if we were to do one hundred percent and say ten percent of that has to be for grants, that's something that I, that I'm, that I might make that motion, uh, before the budget, uh, before we complete the budget, um, in October. But, you know, it, what is interesting is this all started off at seventy-five percent, because members of, former members of council did not trust the, how the Visitors' Association was going to work. It took a lot in members of council present that didn't like to do the ninety percent. So to hear that I'm not willing to do the other ten is worrisome, because we, again, we ha- we want a one-stop shop for many different things, but we're not willing to do that for the Visitors' Association. Doesn't make any sense.
Councilmember Witt.
Thank you. I think I'll just weigh in on this tourism issue, and I would say that it, um, I was not on council when the, the tourism tax went through and I was not involved in, um, the politics of all of that. But it just makes no sense to me whatsoever why the city should have any control over this. And it's, it, it seems to me like it is a control issue. It seems like we want some holdover, uh, Longmont Visitors' Association. I think that, uh, I feel very comfortable with the organization, uh, as it stands and, and, um, obviously, there's, there's no question that, uh, Doug Benny has done a great job as well, but it just makes no sense. So I, when the motion is made, I will totally support giving a hundred percent over to, uh, the Visitors' Association.
Well, I guess, I'm not hearing a strong argument, uh, I mean, Doug Ward's saying that Doug Benny's doing a great job, they're very, they're, or excuse me, Joe, excuse me, Joe Ward is, is saying that Doug Benny is doing a great job collaborating and handling the, uh, disbursement of these grants. Um, so, you know, if, if nothing's broken right at this moment, it's not something that's imminent that we have to fix right now, or something we can plan for, for the future, but I think for this year's budget, if everybody's happy with how the system's working, we should take their input. You know, is that going to make it easier or harder, uh, for you? And, uh, you know, I'm hearing that it would make it a little bit more difficult right now, and you, you don't have a problem with the ten percent that's, that's being handled.
Sorry, Mayor Coombs. Um, to respond to that, I think, I mean, every, maybe it gives you a little perspective, the cities I've been in previously, every department had a grant program, and they also received, Kansas City received a hundred percent in lodging tax, but they, because in one community, it was, actually set aside to buy land for, because tourism was, you know, trees and mountains were considered part of the tourism product there, which was a great area to live in. So, you know, but, um, you know, I think, I'm, again, it's, it's certainly, obviously, the, the council's call. I think where, you know, you're asking about, is it troublesome? The, I would say the resistance and difficulty is for our board sometimes, when, like this year, we wanted to give additional support to the Coloradans to add an actual concert that we weren't sure if it was going to occur. And the reply was given to me at some point, well, you guys aren't giving any money, so why do you want your name on this? And the, the answer to that is, the board, our board looks at it and says, well, yeah, we are giving money, because it's tourism dollars. But the truth, the reality, we aren't giving money, it's the city that's giving the money. So there can be little difficulties with that. If the budget goes up in the future and the grant number's larger, do you want it to be ten percent? But it's certainly not something that we've sat back and argued with and said has to happen. And I certainly appreciate the support in the organization that this is even coming up, so, um, and I know that I would certainly recommend to my board that there would be some sort of grant program, because I think we shouldn't necessarily be in the business of creating some of these events that you're hearing. We should be in the business of helping them be facilitate and get better and get stronger for this community, so the Coloradans doesn't just bring, oh, a small thirty or forty thousand people to Main Street, which is not small, by the way, um, bring sixty thousand in the future and there's more destination events. And, um, you know, I, I feel it's a testament to the city that we're all working together anyway. So to me, it feels like a different department and, you know, the direction of the city, it wouldn't, I don't believe it would be money that's just handed over and good luck with it. I know, I can tell already, and we would certainly suggest that there'd be, um, more stringent, uh, stringent might not be the word, but certainly more dynamic, um, performance measurements that are requested and, um, able to be given. So, um, and if I could address just one to Sarah, to Councilmember Levinson's point, um, sort of that having that extra money set aside for something that comes up. For instance, this year, the American Junior Golf Association, uh, approached us in April about coming here, and they ended up having a tournament at Fox Hill Club. Had ninety-six golfers from all over the United States. I think it was thirty-two states represented, and these kids are going to University of Arizona, Southern California, for Division One college scholarships for boys, men and women. Um, and they, we wanted to support them for coming, and we looked at the room nights and the dollars that were generated. And so we were able to throw a little get-together in the evening at Roosevelt Park. That was not money that was budgeted, we were able to find that, to say, listen, this is a group we want back. We want them to come back time and time again. And so that was in addition to this, these grant dollars that came out of our budget to say, let's create a memory for these kids. Sure, we could go out and get coupons at some of our supporting businesses, but let's create a memory to have an event in the evening, get some games for them, so they can establish relationships, and next year, they're not just thinking about Longmont. Longmont's already pen, you know, in pen and ink planned on for two, three, four years out, so.
Thank you, Joe. Councilmember Levinson.
Thank you, Mayor. The other point that I'd like to make here is that, um, there, there has been a reluctance, um, by councilmembers over the years to dictate, for example, you know, what you do point by point with your budget. And I think that, um, for us to sit here and say, well, you know, take the whole ball of wax, but we're going to say, we want you to spend X, Y, Z dollars. And certainly, you can write that into a co-, um, a contract, however, there is, um, a situation where, um, things could not be coming along real well, and sometime during the year, you'll come back and say, well, gee, we need that other ten percent to do something that we could not figure out in the budget before. And then totally the grant program disappears, where having that little bit of a grant program, I mean, at one point, we're giving you free rein with anything you want to do with that ninety percent. And then to say that, that there could be, um, an initiative here, um, to say, just take the whole ball of wax, I really think that there could still be a, a lot of benefit to having that ten percent, um, you know, in a box where we're going to preserve that. And certainly, if you end up with, I mean, if we end up in a terrible situation like we, we did where tourism nights dropped so much for a period of time, then we all adjust our expectations. I mean, but again, I, I think that it's, um, uh, kind of like having, um, a, a little bit of a safety there to then have something to, to dip into. If you have an event like the golfers, you know, to have a grant where, you know, you, you get a band for that evening, that's something that could be in the grant program. And, um, certainly, uh, that gives some additional flexibility. And frankly, it gives the city some acknowledgement as a partnership in welcoming visitors, not, it's not just, you know, what a lot of people tell me about Longmont, it's not just the one entity, it's when they walk on Main Street, that that owner of Sun Rose Cafe welcomes them as a visitor, like they were becoming into their own living room. And so that's part of the partnership, it's the businesses, it's the city, it's Visit Longmont. So I, I still would prefer to have that, that ten percent, um, with the grant program, and you're already participating in it, and it just gives a additional kind of opportunity there, um, being preserved.
Thank you. Councilmember Samori.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I don't think anybody was suggesting that we let Joe run with one hundred percent. Uh, I think we want to give him the hundred percent, he can still run wild with the ninety, and we can still keep the ten percent as funding for various events that could require grants, but he would be managing it as opposed to Doug Benny. As the Leggie program grows and we get more businesses going, I think Doug Benny's time is better spent helping those businesses than trying to manage four or five, uh, grants. And I know in Joe's budget, he has, uh, a salesperson scheduled, and I, I think they're in the search for a salesperson, and that could be something that the salesperson can use as an incentive to attract, uh, visitors and events to Longmont. So we're not saying go run wild, we're just saying, you manage it, it'll still be handled the same way, but he'll be responsible to manage it, and the city can still be involved in the process.
Councilmember Bagley.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I've got a simple question. Do you want the twenty-nine grand to play with? That's really what it comes down to me. I mean, does the, do you want, do you want it to be how it is, or do you want it to change so we can give you the twenty-nine grand, a hundred percent of the tax, and you got, you can use it for your grants and other things? What do you want?
You're really good at that, bringing that back. And no, it's, I appreciate that question.
What's your, what's your magic one?
I would say, um, boy, I mean, it's a good question. I would say, yeah, I mean, it's my, in my way, it's my responsibility to certainly represent the members of the community and the hospitality industry, and we all are integrated. And so I feel that our organization needs to be sort of the professional, the resource in the tourism industry. It does without, and it certainly doesn't say without partners, because we are just remote the area, we're not going to be the ones necessarily, the Sun Rose Cafes of the world, that are meeting people on the street and greeting them. So, um, I, to me, looking at it from when I got here, let's just say my perspective was, it surprised me that part of it was managed by the city and part of it was managed by us. To me, it seemed like either, you know, trust us and hold us accountable, not just trust me, because I smile a lot, you know, trust me, hold us accountable to all of it, or trust us and hold us accountable to none of it. Um, to me, that just seems to be logic, the logic I look at it from. And we certainly would be, just like every other dollar we spend and invet and invest in the community and invest in tourism promotion, very conscious of how those dollars are spent. And I would actually then go back to say, a testament to the relationships that I feel that we have with the city, with Sandy, with Harold, with Doug, with Brad, with even other departments that were maybe not as directly related to on a daily basis, those discussions are wide open, you know? They can change and say, hey, Joe, this is what we think's happening, and give us an update, you know? Councilman Santos wants a quarterly update, we'd be glad to give that. So I think that those are things that integrate those organizations more. Um, so, one word answer?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, I think it's my next, just, I don't, who sits on? Was that you, Councilmember Finley, or Councilmember Samori?
Okay.
Um, uh, so you sit on the board, we appoint how many board members? I mean, do we, how does, how does the board member process work?
Uh, three. And then, um, Sandy sits, uh, Sandy's our city liaison at the moment.
I, I think, I mean, if he wants it, and it sounds to me like we have input galore, um, my question would be, when would a motion, I know it was your idea, Councilmember Santos, to, you, you kind of breached this, so my question is, when would a motion be appropriate?
Councilmember Santos. As I mentioned earlier, Joe, I would go back to your board. Um, could, you know, pitch it to the board, so I have a little bit of time. It's, it sounds that there's at least a consensus that at least one hundred percent goes to lava and, and potentially with a requirement of ten percent, we already got a requirement of ten percent that goes to grants. What's the difference of Doug Benny manages it, or Joe Ward manages it over at Visit Longmont? The difference is, you go to Visit Longmont as the organization to get those funds. That's a big, yeah, no, I'm not willing to make a motion yet, I'd like to hear from the board.
Um, thank you, Councilman Santos, Mayor Potem Santos. Um, I would say that the board has had discussion about it, there's never been a formal vote on requesting that from the city, but the board has definitely had discussion about that possibility already. I'd be very glad to go back to the board and get some more details perhaps on how that they would suggest, um, you know, we interpret, you know, we take this conversation and say, hey, what are we going to do with that ten percent? Are we willing to commit to a grant? And then come back, and I also know that we're heading into a, a contract discussion phase, of which this could all certainly be part of that, so I do think time is in our favor to discuss it.
Well, then I make that motion to, uh, request a, an opinion, what's being proposed, what I have proposed to Visit Longmont, to their board. Uh, I make that motion to formally request a response from Visit Longmont regarding my proposal.
Thank you. Councilmember Samori.
Well, I can tell you, the Visit Longmont Board would be very happy to get the extra ten percent, because I think it's been an issue since the beginning, uh, when it was originally formed, and they weren't getting the full allocation. So, I think the answer would be yes from the board, because we've had multiple discussions, and they, and they've always said, why aren't we in charge of it?
Councilmember Santos.
Well, to get a formal response, I think it would be appropriate.
Absolutely.
We still have some time. Uh, when's your next board meeting?
Next week, Wednesday, as a matter of fact.
Perfect. I hope to-
That will have to be topic number one of our discussion.
I hope to hear from you, at least an email from the board on Thursday.
Okay, we've got a motion, it's been seconded, and let's vote.
That's a seven to zero.
Thank you, members of council, for the time, look forward to seeing you soon.
One minute. You're just running.
Mayor Council.
Mayor of council, I will spend the last one minute, I promise, just endeavoring to wrap up. Just briefly, the program amounts that you see here on this list, they have not changed for 2013. They are still, continue to be funded at 2012 amounts. I mentioned earlier, the exception is the Small Business Lending Program, which is not a general fund expense that's allocated from our Community Development Block grant. I think we've covered a lot of ground with this. You talked to John earlier, their funding, again, is similar to what it's been the last several years. We just concluded with Visit Longmont. And if I could just briefly say that you do have some time to make that decision relative to Visit Longmont, because we will go through the normal course of action of developing scopes of services and contracts with our partner agencies, and we tend to bring those to you prior to Thanksgiving. So we do have some time for that. Lastly, I'll just mention, again, mentioned earlier about our Leggie program and its growth, a big part of that is the support that we received from the Small Business Development Center, so that we would formally allocate some of the funding from Leggie to support the efforts of the Small Business Development Center. With that, I have nothing else to add this evening.
Councilmember Levinson?
Matt, could you, maybe, I'm going to pose a speculative question here. If the, if Denver gets the Patent Office branch, would it behoove us to maybe beef up a little bit of the budget with SBDC or try to advocate to have a full SBDC office to cover, you know, Northern Colorado, Weld County, Laramore County, centered here in Longmont? Because we have such a, we're such a hub of technical expertise here with our primary employers?
Mayor, Councilmember Levinson, I think in years past, we have discussed with the SBDC allocating additional time, if not physical presence here. Obviously, we've got more time because we devoted additional resources to it. To actually have a physical presence from them here would be a considerable additional amount of money. Now, whether or not that there are federal or other grant programs that could help support that, so that the city is not expending those magnitude of dollars, that's something we still obviously continue to work with them on. But we are very comfortable at this point with our relationship with Sharon King and her staff. She makes herself readily available. She is a very busy person, but she really sees the value of what's going on in this community. And believe me, as we discussed with her and her agency and the funding that she's pursuing elsewhere, if that could endeavor well for us, we will certainly take advantage of that going forward.
So do you know what the, I think I remember off the top of my head, the baseline cost would be about $125,000 a year?
Council Doug Benny, again. Councilmember Levinson, it would be approximately $125,000. I'd like to also mention too, there's really not a sweet in-between. We currently fund them at $20,000. There's not capacity to go to 30, to go to 40. They simply do not have the person power to provide us extra hours and extra services. So we're pretty much maxed out. So it's either go to a full-time center, which would require about 125 at least, or pretty much stay where we're at.
So does Fort Collins have a full-time center? Loveland or Greeley?
Greeley does. I think there is one that serves both Loveland and Fort Collins, but I'm not sure. Yeah, there's 14 statewide, and so.
I'm just, and I'm just optimistically looking forward to having Denver have that patent satellite, satellite patent office too. And I'm just thinking that we should try to pursue getting a full office, SBDC full office, just because I think it really might help us. Either that, or we could try to cost shift the Boulder office in the Longmont. That might, that might be a more difficult challenge. I don't know. But I don't know whether or not you know anything about the satellite patent office, that the progress is being made on that?
I'm sorry, I don't.
John, would you mind, thank you.
So the decision has been made. Denver is one of three locations around the country that are getting one. They're in the process of, they're in their site selection process, if you will, to find a location, although I've heard some discussion around, they're pretty much centered, but they're, they use GSA. So they're staying out of the political process. GSA is going to go through their normal process, but there's, there's talk that they have focus. I don't think it's going to be the federal center, but that's a potential. Nevertheless, so it is done. They are going to have an office in Denver. There have been some, some efforts through the regional economic development effort, the Metro Denver EDC, to make connections with them as that process goes on.
And when you say the federal center, you need in Lakewood?
Yes.
One where RTD goes to. Sorry, I just had to get that in.
Okay.
Councilmember Samori?
Well, I don't expect that we'll be getting an SBDC center in Longmont anytime soon because simply there is no funding at the state level. And there is one in Loveland, I believe, off of Fourth Street, that, that serves this area as well.
Thank you, Grant.
Mayor, members of council, Jim Golden, again. We have two more sections left, and hopefully they'll be brief. We'll be beginning with the Public Safety Fund budget. And Public Safety Chief Mike Butler is here tonight, if you have questions. And also Tim Lewis, we can check his response time, if we want to have him run up here to the podium and answer questions. So real quickly, the overview for the Public Safety Fund is $4.87 million of sales and use tax from the Public Safety Tax, budgeted for 2013. We also have $372,000 of grants, some grants and mostly other intergovernmental revenues, including dollars for emergency position, as well as our dollars from the county that could be contributed to the shooting range project. We do have a projection of $275,000 for firing range operations revenues. The proposed expenditures in the fund are $5.76 million, including 41.38 FTE distributed between police, fire, communications, emergency management, and graffiti removal. There is one-time expenses of $138,000 for police and fire expenses, including an automated ticket writing system. And then on top of that, we also do have $322,000 programmed for a roof improvement, CIP, project at the firing range facility. Again, if we do move forward on that project, we would hope to recover half of that from the intergovernmental revenue I referenced from the county. The firing range operations expenses that I referenced of $275,000, they're offset entirely by user fee revenues for the facility from other governments in the public. And then there's $350,000 that is programmed as a one-time type expense, I shouldn't say one-time, it's an ongoing expense for the lease of fire station number one. The fund did finish, we're projecting it to finish this year with a $1.7 million fund balance, which includes an 8% emergency reserve of $400,000. This proposed budget, this pro forma included in your packet, and that is showing of 2013 through 22. The 2013 budget does take the fund balance down to 1.45 million. And then future budgets do call for the use of up to $150,000 of fund balance annually for one-time expenses. Again, we keep 8% reserve, that would never be a tap for those purposes. The lease on the fire station will end in 2020, and at that time, that $350,000 is freed up, could be used for other potential ongoing or one-time expenses. So you have questions for me or any of the folks I referenced as far as on the Public Safety Fund?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Actually, I didn't, I didn't want to ask this question, we were looking at the IGAs with the federal agencies and with the other users of the firing range. I just felt it was a little bit, I just looked at what the salary would be and what we were charging per hour, and I, I'm trying to remember correctly off the top of my head that when there's the rental of the conference room, it was something like $20 an hour. And I know right now, don't we charge $50 to rent any other facility for a meeting room out at the, like, whether we would use the library or Isaac Walton, or somebody that might want to have a meeting that wasn't a nonprofit or something at the Public Works Building off of Airport Road? Don't we charge a much higher fee for some rentals of rooms?
Mayor Coombs, members of council, community rooms, actually, there are no fee associated with the use of those rooms. I'm not sure that the Public Works facility is actually used for public meetings.
I just remember at one point-
For non-public meetings.
-that we raised, a couple of years ago in the budget, we just raised the fees on that.
My understanding is that only, one of the only places I've heard where we charge a fee is the senior center.
We do rent facilities like the senior center and a memorial building or pools out, we do charge for those type of uses. But public meeting rooms, particularly the community rooms themselves, are set up to be used at no charge.
So the other question I had is, when I was looking at the budget of what we were going to be paid in those contracts, I thought it was a little bit low considering the type of personnel you would have to have there. Somebody who was, you know, background checked, certified, and I don't know whether or not we had a true cost recovery. That was my question. And then I also, you know, was interested in the marketing and publication for the firing range, whether or not, you know, we can look at that $2,500 being offset with revenue we already know we have.
Mayor, members of council, Mike Butler, Public Safety Chief. I think your question, Councilperson Levinson, is on the order of, will we be able to recover costs based on the fees that we're charging? You know, we've projected out the best that we can. We've used the help of finance and budget to assist us with that in terms of our costs. We know the number of hours that the range will be used either by other police departments or the public. And when you cost it out in terms of the number of hours of use that's available, if we fill all those hours, the cost recovery will be there.
And it just seemed like that from the number of hours that was going to be available for public use and others, that, you know, some, some of the agencies could rent it from 1:00 in the morning to 3:00 in the morning, if that's what time they wanted to rent it. And I'm just kind of concerned that we're going to have to have a lot more personnel out there than what I had originally anticipated.
And perhaps I don't understand your question, but we think we have a number, we think we have the appropriate amount of staff out there to assist. You know, when a, when a law enforcement agency is out there, they bring their own safety range officers, we don't have to provide staff for that. All we provide staff for is the public option use. And that's a Friday night through a Sunday night gig. And so we're going to have at least one full-time person out there, and sometimes a couple of part-time people as well. So, and that's all included in that cost that we believe that we're going to be able to recover with the fees that we're charging.
Then the one other question I had about the marketing and publication for the firing range, is that going to be able to just be offset by revenue? Because that $2,500, it just seems like a no-brainer that we're going to get that back in revenue.
Well, that's a great question. I don't think it was intended that we'd get that back in the revenue. I mean, what we're talking about are the actual costs for the use of the range. You know, the $2,500 is a one-time cost. We're hoping to be able to have that on an annual basis, because at some level with that public option, we are in competition with other entities around the area. And we certainly want to let people know that that range exists, not only in the city of Longmont, but also within the county. This is a joint operation with Boulder County. I know the sheriff would love to have a lot of people who are shooting in the mountains come down and use that range. And so marketing, doing that kind of marketing is something that we're going to have to continually do. I mean, the cost recovery could very well be there. But, you know, that's one of those things, when we, when we ask for one-time cost, it's not necessarily something that we're going to have an expectation that we're going to recover. And it's a small amount, too, $2,500.
Right. And I guess that's where I was going, that anytime we're going to do market a facility like that, I know the rec department probably, when they put out their marketing, their marketing piece, their rec guide, that's part of the budget and what they budget for what they charge for fees. So it just seems to make sense that we just include that in the, how we set up the fees for-
And that's a good point, Councilperson Levinson, we probably will do that. We want to continually market that. It's just that, you know, we're, it's, we were hoping for this to be ongoing, but there wasn't enough, and so we put it in as one-time this time.
And is there any way that we could carve out, using the Public Safety Fund, to fund the Community Justice Partnership? Because it seems like it, we missed an opportunity, because one of the years that we had the fund, and we didn't realize that additional new money could have been absorbed, and seems like we're at the stasis now, at the first $180,000 comes out of the general fund budget. But there must be some sleight of hand that we can perform to try to get it back into the budget where it seems most appropriate.
Well, I will not describe it as sleight of hand budget.
You could do magic with the budget, though. Just with our hands.
Or magic. I think the numbers have to add up.
Right.
And part of the deal, as, as Jim talked about, is we may have a $321,000 expense that we have to take out of the Public Safety Fund to, there is a roof out there that, you know, we could probably let it go for another year or two, but we're not 100% certain, we're still having tests done. And that might would come out of the fund, money's there for that. Half of that probably would be coming out of Boulder County as well. Or there might even be a couple of grants, but until we know more about whether or not we're going to spend that kind of money, at this point, we kept $20,000 coming, going to the LCJP and any other part of that, to the entire council, is that we didn't fund everything that we requested in for police and fire, simply because there wasn't enough money. And so we're, we're trying to figure this all out for police, fire, firing range, LCJP, and trying to strike that balance as good as we can.
Great, thank you.
Councilmember Bradley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Glad to forgive you, chief, it's after 10 o'clock, so my mental functioning is a little off. But I've been going along, the only thing I wanted to ask was, I think I speak for all of council, that we love our police officers, we love our firefighters, the AMTs. I know that there's a lot of things going on with the collective bargaining, with the budget. Do our boys and women in blue, and our men and women in whites, do they have everything they need with this budget to do what they need to do, to be happy, to be contributing, to feel the love? Is there something we're missing? And so what is it?
You know, hot tubs at the stations might help.
You know what, we're on it.
You know, but it's a, you know, that's, that's, that's a, that's a, that's a large question. You know, there's, there's always, certainly, we can always use more resources. But we also have to take into account where this budget is at, where the Public Safety Fund is at, where the revenues are at in the general fund. I am constantly monitoring. And what I'm convinced of is that this city manager, if we go to him and say, you know, we're going to need more resources, that those resources will happen. And, and so in terms of keeping everybody happy, you know, that's one of those things. Sometimes budgets don't all, aren't all, is one factor of keeping people happy. There's all kinds of other factors that keep people happy as well. So I appreciate the question. I appreciate the sense of care along those lines. But I will tell you, when we need something, you'll hear about it.
Great, thanks, chief.
If I can add to what the chief has said, I think one of the things that we really have to keep our, we have to realize that is coming in the near future, is that we know that we have two stations that are problematic. And, and so when we look at the bigger picture of the general fund and the Public Safety Improvement Fund, those are things we have to keep in the back of our head as we continue looking to the future. Because those are going to be two significant expenses that, they will hit us. We mentioned, Dale mentioned when he talked about the trash trucks, that in the stations, the trucks are getting bigger and they're getting closer to the door. So those are things that we're talking about, trying to put the bigger picture in perspective and look out five years, 10 years, don't you see what we have to do?
Six and one.
Six and, yeah, six and one.
Six and two.
Yeah.
Hold on. Thank you. Thank you.
All right, Mayor, we have one more topic, the Human Service Agency funding. So press on. Okay, Karen Roney?
Good evening. Mayor and City Council, Karen Roney with Community Services. We will move through this quickly, and you will then be in charge of how much you really want to ask us about this, and we're here to, as long as you need, to be here to answer your questions. So, the Human Service Agency funding, as you talked about earlier, is about 1.6% of the general fund revenues. According to our city, financial policies are set aside each year to help fund nonprofit human service agencies that can meet a variety of human service needs among residents in our community. And to address Councilmember Finley's question about the 1.6, where did that come from? So, what I can tell you is that originally, as Jim had mentioned, when we shifted the way we funded that, it was at 1.3%, and about 10 years ago, council increased that to 1.6% set aside so that we could incorporate the Child Care Certificate Program as part of the Human Service Agency Funds, because previously that had been funded out of a different line item in the general fund. So, that was the rationale for the increase 10 years ago. So, in the 2013 budget, that 1.6% of the general fund revenues equates to a little bit over a million dollars, $1,4,826, which is, which is set aside to provide human services. What we do out of that is that we do set aside two amounts of money. One is the money for the Child Care Certificate Program, which is $150,000 is what is being recommended for 2013. And that really helps to provide gap funding for low-income families who are receiving assistance for childcare so that they can go back to school or go back for job training and move off of assistance from the county. And this program has, helps to fund the gap between what the market rate for childcare is and what they get, what providers get reimbursed for, from the county, so that low-income families and children can have a full range of access to childcare. And then in 2013, we are also recommending a set aside of $110,000 for the RISE Program. That's the Pilot Poverty Reduction Program that we will be in year three next year, actually, year two of operation. And so, that leaves us with $744,826 and for the competitive grant funding process. And we can go into more detail about the RISE and Child Care Certificate if you would like us to. So, the Housing and Human Services Advisory Board is the, is council's appointed board that manages this whole competitive funding process. We, each year, we identify what are the basic needs that we want to try to address with this funding, and as you can see in your, in the PowerPoint, is that this really hasn't changed a whole lot. So, it's to help fund agencies that help strengthen and stabilize individuals and families, providing safety net services, helping with strengthening children, youth, and families, helping with self-sufficiency and independence for adults, and generally to prove access to services and resources in the community. So, the process that the advisory board goes through every year is that they do prepare and release grant applications, they review all those applications, the advisory board along with staff participate in what we call desk audits as well as site visits of agencies. We review agencies' performance, about a third of those agencies that we fund, we review those agencies, every, a third of those agencies every year. We conduct hearings to review the applications, to ask questions that the advisory board members have from reviewing the applications, from participating in the audits in order to try to gather as much data as they can to make these recommendations to City Council. So, tonight, I am going to invite Bob Priest, who is the Chair of our Housing and Human Services Advisory Board, who has been here with his wife since 7:00, and if Bob, if you want to come on down and go through the, briefly go through the funding recommendations for 2013, and we have staff here that would be glad to answer any of council's questions about this process as well as the certificate program and the RISE program.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. You guys are amazing. You have such diligence and endurance. I'm amazed. I couldn't do it, sit there for four hours. Boy, your wife left already. My wife's still there.
I noticed.
Just saying, just saying. Okay, I wanted to go through this quickly. What we've got is the board has done an amazing job. I think there's, oh, yeah, Ed's still there. We have one member left that stayed with us, and all the hard questions, I'm going to duck and let Ed handle them. We went through, as Karen said, we went through all the applications, and they were, there was an amazing amount of work involved. They were probably half an inch thick, and there was 32 of them. And then we had hearings involving three nights, and then we all got together to deliberate whether we thought the funds should go, and we made the recommendations that are in front of you today. So, let me move quickly on into the, this chart that I think you have in front of you. There were 32 agencies, as I said, they requested almost a million dollars. 29 of the agencies received about $750,000. The largest allocations you can see on the chart there, and I just busted them out into the largest ones, so you can kind of get a feel for where the money's going, and there were three agencies that did not receive any funding. And the reason for the first and the last of those three is we didn't see basic human need there, and then the Intention Homes seemed like it had a good project, but there was lack of presence in Longmont. Last year, we asked them during the hearing, said that we hadn't seen them in Longmont, and we asked them to get in touch with HOPE, Homeless Outreach, and they hadn't done that, apparently, so we decided not to fund them. As far as I know, there is just one agency, we, of course, sent to all the agencies, I think it was at the end of August, what our recommendations were to the council, and just one of them sent rebuttal, and one of them called Karen for some clarification. The only one that sent a rebuttal was the Veterans, Helping Veterans, and they were concerned of our comment that we made for improvement would be that they, they had more veterans on their staff. And I plan on closing with them personally and let them understand what our concern was. So, there you have that, and then the next page. Thank you. The next page is the breakout of the different areas that Karen went through, the basic human needs, and then providing for children and families. Those are all, those are all the, and I believe there's 19 of those are the ones that are funded. So, that's the pie chart that you have in front of you showing the ones that we funded. And the next chart is all of them, and from there, you can see all the agents that we funded and how much we funded them. I think that one of the questions that I had earlier was, how did you determine who got what? And some of them appeared to be more or less, was it a percentage or was it arbitrary? And the reason, the way we went through this, it was very well done. We sat in a group, we arbitrated the amounts, people came with evidence from the community as well as what they'd seen for themselves, and we moved up and down and finally came to this resolve that 100% everybody agreed to.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I just want a comment, not even a question. I'm the liaison with this particular group, and I had the opportunity to sit in and just watch what they do, and I was very impressed, and I'm not impressed easily. They, the degree of questions, the commitment, they spent night after night interviewing and asking the right questions. Their, their, it's late, so I don't want to say BS detector, but they were just very, you could tell that the whole board was going out of their way to be very careful with how they were going to suggest we spend our money. And so, just thank you to you and the whole board. I thought, I mean, just hands down, when I look at the results and what they went through, make no mistake about it, the recommendation, I think we should take seriously because they put in the work and the time, and they asked the right questions. Thanks, Bob.
Mayor and Councilmember Bagley, I appreciate those comments, and I also appreciate that Brian Bagley attends the majority of our board meetings, and he also went to all the hearings, and that was, was very good. At one point, I asked him, I said, "You need to be careful with some of your comments because I don't want you swaying the board," and he immediately agreed and said that he would.
Shut up. No, I agreed to shut up, not you shut up.
Councilperson Levison.
Thank you, Mayor. Bob, in particular, I'm concerned about one item on the legal service front. I know from, you know, my outside reading that the, the amount that the federal government helps support for pro bono and legal services for poor people and indigent that have no money for an attorney is going to be cut pretty radically. And moving forward, I am curious as to why some of the legal centers didn't ask for more money for us, knowing what a crisis it is. I mean, it's a terrible crisis right now. I mean, somebody, their employer decides not to pay them, they don't have money to hire an attorney and go to court. I mean, Bagley's really expensive, I've heard, so, you know, certainly not going to hire him. But it is really a crisis right now for people that, you know, they've done everything right, they don't get their security deposit back. They can't afford to take two days off of work to file something. So, I'm surprised we didn't have a larger request. Can you tell me how that interview went, and, you know, in general, you know, for legal services, what did you hear from them?
Mayor and council members, we, I believe that Boulder County Legal Services, we have funded them 100% of what they asked for, and I will agree that the legal help for lower-income people is a problem, but I wouldn't, I wouldn't say that it is the, a disaster as you described. I would say that people on the street that we see without housing, people having to sleep in a ditch overnight, that's a problem. We have people that have lost all ten toes from phraspite last winter. We've had people that have lost a life. And in the meantime, we're closing a warming center, and we're trying to work with the city now to figure out how we're going to respond to that, but that, in my mind, is a disaster. Legal help is important, but it's not as important as having something to eat and having a warm place to sleep.
Well, sometimes the legal help is that, you know, you get your benefits and, you know, you get, you get some legal help to give you some muscle when you may not know how to navigate the system or have the means to do the transportation and get there, too. I mean, I just, I read the National Law Journal pretty regularly, and in a national sense, it's a crisis, absolutely. People getting evicted, and they'll end up on the street because there's no access to legal services. And so, the other thing I was curious about is whether, I'm sorry, yes, I'd like to move to extend the meeting past 11 o'clock.
Second.
Did we get a vote?
That's the wrong button there.
I voted in a loss.
Really? I'll change my vote. I can change my vote. I can change my vote.
Okay, we're done.
You want to be done? I just changed my vote.
We're done?
Okay, you want to be done?
We're done. We'll pick you up next week with where you are.
I just didn't think I could change my vote. You want to be done?
I voted the way I wanted to vote. You vote the way you wanted to vote.
I'll finish this.
Okay. The meeting is at 4:00 to 3:00 with-
Breakmanship, yeah. Yeah, it's breakmanship here at this one panel at 11 o'clock.
Councilmember Bagley, Witt, and Finley, dissenting.
So, I just, also, I'm curious that the number difference between last year with the Hour Center, where we funded them at $52,000, and then $90,000 this year. I don't remember what happened last year, do you?
Last year was a, they actually applied late, and we, we didn't fund them for the whole amount because they, they did apply late, so we gave them some of their funding last year, and we gave them additional funding last year for childcare.
Okay, all righty, fine.
And then, Mayor and Councilmember Levison, so I think to add to that, so, so what the Hour Center did last year is access the Child Care Certificate Program. Agencies that do provide childcare can either apply for a grant or they can enroll their, you know, their parents into the Child Care Certificate Program. So, that's how Hour Center funded their childcare last year, and in 2013, they went back to the grant program for the reason that Bob mentioned.
So, does this mean we'll have, that actually, we'll have more participants and more children in the Child Care Certificate Program than we did last year?
What I would say, Councilmember Levison, is that it would probably be different, I mean, children that are being served, not necessarily Hour Center parents, but other low-income parents that are receiving assistance through other childcare agencies.
Okay. And are you going to separately go over the RISE funding stuff or not?
Mayor and Councilmember Levison, we had not planned to unless council had questions, and we're prepared to answer questions.
And I guess the one question I had about the RISE program information is to know whether or not some of the RISE participants use the Child Care Certificate Program, or what of these other agency funding that they may also be, you know, participating in. It might be Head Start with, you know, Wild Plum Center or other things. I just wanted to get a little more information.
Mayor and Councilmember Levison, I think what we can do is to bring back that information. So, I know that we do have, for example, our RISE participants are enrolled in Head Start, they are receiving services from Salute Clinic and others, and what we can do is to bring back and putting council's packet, the more definitive information about just which services that they are availing themselves. But they are doing that, but I, we'd have to get that information from the Housing Authority, and we'd be glad to do that.
Councilmember Witt.
I just wanted to express appreciation for all the hard work that you, as the Chair, have put in, as well as all the board members, to really get into depth and look at all these issues. And I know that you're all open to questions from council, and so, really appreciate the time you've taken to do such a thoughtful job on this. Thank you.
Mayor and council members, I appreciate the compliments, and I will be sure and share that with the board this week. Thank you.
Councilperson Levison.
Thank you, Mayor. I had another question about the, what I read in the packet with the, looking at how we fund the case manager for the RISE program, how we're going to approach that. So, can you talk a little bit about that?
Mayor and Councilmember Levison, yes, so the, basically, the funding for the case manager comes out of the general fund, so that is part of the one-time funding and is proposed to be funded in 2013. So, that's part of, I think, what Jim and Teresa talked about, is that those are services associated with the, expenses associated with the pilot project, and those are in the proposed 2013 budget for the case manager for the RISE program.
But would we ever look at not having a case manager for the RISE program because of the, what the demonstrated effectiveness of having that case manager?
Councilmember Levison, I think certainly as long as we complete that pilot project, that case management is a key component of, you know, of this, of this initiative. So, as long as we are continuing that pilot, we would anticipate continuing to offer the case management.
And in the future, if you think that we've had such great early success, what kind of model would we use if we wanted to expand the number of families, like get a new group of families before the initial period is over? What would we, we look at? Because we, do we have any new housing developments opening up, where we have that ability to have kind of the participants and the non-participants? have kind of the participants and the non-participants?
Mayor and Councilmember Levison, so at this point, I think our direction from City Council was this is a pilot initiative and we are piling that at Aspen Meadows neighborhood. We aren't planning to expand that to other, any new developments at this point in time. We want to complete our five-year pilot, report back, and then really have that discussion and take direction from City Council around what did we learn? We have some of the data in the packet about what we are learning thus far after the first year, but we really want to study that and come back and have a discussion with council about what, you know, what is the future of this model for really making a difference in helping move people out of poverty into self-sufficiency. So we are not extending this to any other new residents at Aspen Meadows neighborhood and we aren't looking at expanding that because that isn't what our agreement and charge was from City Council.
Okay, thank you. And Bob, thanks a lot for all the work.
Of course. Thank you. Mayor, Council.
Councilmember Witt?
I would just like to make a suggestion that in view of the time, perhaps we ought to restrict our comments to things that we couldn't have previously contacted staff about. I think that we have a lot still to get through and playing "what if" at this hour is really not a good use of our everyone's time, so just would like to throw that out there.
Thank you.
So Mayor and Council, that wraps up the budget item for this week.
Does anybody want to take a five-minute break or should we just, all right, let's press through?
Mayor, your next item is discussion on interim park fee options presented by Kim Sugar with Public Works.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Kim Sugar, Natural Resources Manager, and I'm going to discuss some interim park fee options. The presentation is on your desk as well as the minutes from the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board from August. So with that, I am going to actually move through this quickly and avoid some of the background, but if there's some questions, I will be happy to answer them. Just a quick recap, at the spring council retreat meeting, council had asked staff to develop and bring back some options for an interim park fee that included a differential for, between the single-family detached residences versus multifamily residences. The fee is intended to be in place until the Parks, Recreation, and Trails Master Plan is completed in the spring of 2013. And similar to other areas in the Front Range, there's a desire to construct more multifamily housing based on the current market forces, which you did hear some tonight. And additionally, the Longmont area housing market analysis that was completed in July of 2012 this year also highlighted the need for additional multifamily housing in Longmont. And just to recap, too, what the interim fee does not propose to do, it doesn't propose any changes to our existing park standards or the park development policies. There aren't any changes in the overall park fee methodology except for, as I indicated, two different fees, one for detached, single-family, as well as one is multifamily, and this is based on average square footage. And it doesn't include a fee structure for redevelopment at this point. And these items are being investigated as part of the overall master planning process. What does our current park fee cover? So I just really, real quickly, wanted to remind everybody that the development of neighborhood and community parks are the only elements in our park fee and includes land acquisition, design and engineering, art in public places, and the actual construction. Additionally, there is a $5 million earmark for a recreation component, which is the large outdoor swimming pool that's planned for Dry Creek Community Park. And just to recap, our current fee is $5,253. So assumptions for the interim park fees that were provided in your council packets include build-out population of approximately 113,000, there are approximately 9,800 unbuilt units in the city with 53% of those units being targeted for multifamily based on the trends for the last couple of years, and estimated square footage that were based on previous development summits. Construction costs of the parks are about $118,000 an acre for neighborhood parks and $185,000 for community parks. So, moving on, this is a simplified version of the table that was available in the packet. It proposes, the purpose of it is to provide different options to illustrate the impacts of the fee that change with changes in acreages of community parks. And once again, this isn't advocating for necessarily a change in standard, but we were trying to illustrate the magnitude of change as you change acreages. When looking at the options, specifically the detached, single-family dwelling fees and comparing it to our current park fee of $5,253, the options range from a 77% increase in option one to a 23% decrease in option four. Option two is most similar to the existing fee for single-family detached residences and it represents about a 1% increase over the existing fee. On the table, you note that there is a funding gap and this illustrates the difference between the current ratio of developed parks sending that out, built out of the city and to the targeted park acreage. The master plan will be looking at identifying funding options to fill that gap or identifying other alternatives for park development. As noted on the council communication, the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board supported option two A, but did express concerns on prematurely changing any park standards and also encouraging the city to move forward quickly to identify additional funding sources for park development. And with that, we're looking for a direction from council on if there's an option the council would like staff pursue and timing of implementation of that option.
Sorry. Did you say that the board recommended unanimously two A was...
Correct. There were five numbers there, so it was five zero.
Councilmember Bagley?
Oh, excuse me, Samari. This is heavy.
I'm more handsome than he is. Somebody earlier questioned the cost to build the parks.
Yes.
$118,000, $185,000. Does that include the purchase price or is that just a development?
That is just the development. The purchase price is right now about $28,000 per acre. That's what we paid in the past, which will be reevaluated during the master plan.
So the difference between what they think it should cost and what we know it costs is because...
Well, these are our actual numbers. This is what it has been costing the city to develop the parks. The previous comments received, it does include all the basic infrastructure, same thing, the curving, the streets, the water lines. In addition, we have all the sports and leisure equipment, playgrounds, which, I mean, those run almost $100,000 now to put in, so. And plus, any, and then because of, most of these areas have some level of sports field, there's special grading, we have to bring in soil amendments, so it becomes very costly in the irrigation systems as well.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Bagley?
Thank you, Mayor Combs. I'm looking at page 77, which was the more detailed explanation of those numbers. I couldn't get some of the numbers to work out and so I must not be understanding what they are. Could you just explain, just take option two A, and for example, my question is, what exactly does neighborhood current developed acres mean, community current developed acres? Just in layman's terms, could you walk me or us through just very quickly, what would option two A, what are these numbers representing?
Yes, councilmembers. If you walk down the table, we begin by what our populations are, then we have the neighborhood park standards and what we're using for the acreages, and then what's remaining for the unbuilt housing. We have a single family and we have a murky family. That adds up to that 9,800, approximately 9,800 I've mentioned. Additionally, then we have what the average square footage for a single-family home and as I mentioned, we looked at the data from recent, or the last couple of years of summits, so that's where that average came from. The next item is the number of acres for each park type, neighborhood, and community that would be needed to meet the standards. So for instance, the standard for neighborhood parks with, which is two and a half acres per thousand population, you would need a total of approximately 282 acres. Then the next set of numbers is what is actually already developed in the city. So we currently have 189 acres of neighborhood parks developed and we have 251 acres of community parks, so approximately 400 acres.
So are we, so going back up top, is that at build-out or is that right now? Are we behind?
Yeah, that would be a build-out. We are behind. We are at 2.16. We have to have a slide here. So the city is currently at 2.16 acres for neighborhood park and the ratio for community parks is 2.87 versus our standard at 4.5. All right, continuing down, so we have this developed, so then we have what is the remaining undeveloped that we're looking to actually meet that standard. So we have 27, whoops, sorry, two A, 27.7 acres for neighborhood and then for community we have 174.4 acres. Then I continue down of the acres that we need to actually purchase where we don't own the land, because some of the acres that we need for development we own and some we don't. So we need additional, approximately 63 acres to be purchased for the neighborhood and then for the community park standard, we need to purchase approximately 26 acres. So, and then we need to continue developing the parks, so we have a remaining 60, about 63 acres that need to be developed for neighborhood and then we have about 100 for community parks. And then down below are the numbers I had mentioned before, the cost to develop, which is about 118,000 for neighborhood parks and about 185,000 for community parks. So then you multiply those numbers of the cost per acre to develop times the acres that need to be developed and you get that next set of numbers.
And then where, what numbers add up to that 45181? If you go down to the 1, 2, 3, 4, fifth line, the 280, 238, and the 45181, that's, those are totals that we're shooting for, right?
Right, that equal back up to the two and a half acre for neighborhood and the four acre for community park.
Right, and then what's, shouldn't the numbers below all equal your neighborhood and community totals?
If you have, well, part of, you have the developed and the undeveloped should add up to the total and then a portion of that may need to be purchased, so they all shouldn't necessarily add up.
Okay, all right, that makes sense. And then, all right, and then why two A over three A?
Well, the reason we had just, well, we just got up two A, we said that is the most similar for the single-family detached housing and plus that was the option that Pratt had suggested because they said the standard was similar to what our existing standard is. So that was, why that was one particular option, yeah.
And what's, and the average right now for a multifamily developer would be the same as the detached dwelling fee?
Correct, as our current.
So the lower number would be the new fee, so they basically be getting their fees cut in half?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. So what were, I'm just trying to remember kind of what some of the assumptions were and when I was, and I know you weren't responsible for this part of it, but it seems like we've got a couple of different analyzations that are maybe not really connected. When I was looking at some things this afternoon, it, the executive summary talks about the Longmont area housing market analysis and there's, I guess there's a kind of implicit presumption about what that analysis was and what's actually needed. The analysis, when I read it, indicated that we perhaps have a gap and we need more multifamily housing and, but the gap that was identified is really we need more low-cost, really affordable for people that are less than 40% to 50% of average median income. And so when we're looking at some of these dynamics, that report also didn't, also indicated there wasn't one single silver bullet that, you know, of course, regulatory effects of government, you know, I think the number was 20% is the cost of building housing, but I don't see anything in this information that actually indicates that, this is the silver bullet, that it's a short-term, six-month window. I mean, I don't feel that what we would, any action that we would take tonight is pretty short-term, seeing that we're going to have the master planning information, we'll have a comprehensive report on housing needs in the community coming up by the end of the year. And frankly, I don't have enough information on what the economic impact of this is going to be as far as, not just in kind of the short-term. I don't know how many things are in the pipeline that this would affect and frankly, looking at the dynamics here, would we short-change the community as a whole in the future by doing something that might only be in effect for five months? And that we're going to be, we're looking at a lot of different options coming up, so I don't, I don't see that this does very much to resolve a bunch of other unanswered questions that don't necessarily have anything to do with this fee in particular. And when I was looking at the charts in the rest of the packet, you're making assumptions that this is what the costs are today and this is what the unbuilt units are. It doesn't really talk about when the city can also be involved in the regulatory environment, giving density bonuses, for examples, and other things like that that come into play when you look at the affordability index. So I'm not really inclined to change anything right now, thinking that by the time we would write in ordinance and everything else, that it might be a matter of, like, we're giving a five-month window to doing this and then what would we do when we get real numbers?
If I could, just real quick, Mayor Combs and Councilmember Levison, Dale Rademacher, Director of Public Works, Natural Resources. I think some of the work that the staff's put into this analysis is likely work that we're going to be able to carry through even after we complete the master plan and in fact, what the master plan would likely do is to refine some of the assumptions that we've made, refine some of the final details, but not likely overturn everything. So I wouldn't necessarily look at this as just a five-month window, but rather that once the plan is done, one of the outcomes out of the plan is going to be to try to identify how to, what to do with this gap issue, say if you go with one of the options that we've recommended. That's going to be the real work of the community, is trying to figure out, how do we do that? Do we do that either through a combination of bringing in new revenues and new funding sources? Do we do that with looking at the size of some of our parks or some of the amenities that we put in upfront as opposed to maybe staging them over time? So I think that's the real work that's going to come out. I think the work we were trying to respond to as staff that we heard at the retreat was to look at coming up with a methodology that's reasonable to have a differentiation between single-family detached and multifamily. That's the main work that we're trying to bring forward to you. And knowing, again, that the master plan, while it's going to refine some of this, it's not likely going to change course dramatically with regards to having this differentiation.
I guess that what I'm trying to figure out is, you know, where is the data that's... says that people that live in multi-family housing use parks less? It, it does, it seems like there's a big disconnect. I mean, I, I spent most of my life growing up in an apartment, one sort of another, and I know in my teenage years, not having any private outdoor space, we spent all of our time in the public parks.
And Councilmember Levinson and, and Mayor Combs, staff hasn't attempted to analyze that. What we did was research whatever communities are doing and what we're finding is that many have a differentiation and they, many of them, most of them are basing them on a square footage. So that many times comes down to number of bedrooms, number of people that you have in a house, which through the, the history or the entire time that a house might be occupied or an apartment, leads to a greater potential. So it, it's really sort of similar to how we do like a water tap. We don't charge the same price for a water tap for a multi-family unit as we do for a single-family house because frankly, they're bigger. They have more potential to have more people there. We can probably question or debate who's going to use a park more or less, but you know, that, that ranges from really who's in those dwelling units. And what we're trying to really look at is what is the size of the dwelling unit? What's the, the base value of that dwelling unit? And, and how much is this SDF or impact fee affecting or impacting that final affordability and cost of that unit?
Well, I guess, yeah.
That's part of the couches that we run, so we haven't tried to ascertain who's necessary, and I don't know that we can, because again, I think that's, there's too, there's too many unknowns and too many variables in that to probably never come to a definitive answer.
Well, and, and I think that in, in a, in a way, this process, the way it was set up, might be a little bit unfair to you because when I reviewed that housing analysis report, what it actually indicated is that something that's really opposite to what the indicators, the way the chart is set up saying is that, you know, what we need to do is advocate for reducing fees on units that would be 958 square feet. What the housing analysis report, and you weren't asked to, to, to match up any of this, this is why I'm seeing this wide disconnect, says that most of the units that are in demand are going to be the larger units, the two and three-bedroom units, and that the highest rate of, of occupancy and, and people needing the units and the one that the market will respond to is those larger units, not inefficiency, not a one-bedroom, one-bathroom. And so I think that the, the way the analysis has been approached is, is totally disjointed. It's not really giving us the right information.
And Mayor Combs and Councilmember Levinson, I, I wouldn't say that we overly relied on, on that particular study. What did catch my eye in the study as well was that the authors of the study did determine that the park improvement fee, different than many of the other system development fees at the city, was high. And I think that, that stood out as a separate line item, which, you know, when we took the data to you at your retreat, we also showed that the city's park fee was relatively high compared to other communities and it's, it's even more so when you look at it from a multi-family unit perspective. So that's really all we, we tried to look at. We did not, as you're saying, we did not in-depth try to analyze the outcomes from the housing study because we're trying to simply look at this methodology to have a differentiation between the two types of units. And that, that ultimately is a policy issue for the city council. What we tried to do was bring you some different options that analyze it, hopefully with enough information so you can understand at least the approach that we took and then to give us direction beyond that.
And I guess what my discussion revolves around is, number one, I don't think there's enough information, plus I think that the kind of economic analysis to say that this one item is going to spur exactly the type of, that wasn't really the question we asked you. All it was is, you know, what's your determination? And then just to look at the sense of fairness where, you know, we had determined a fee so that we could get to the end game. And now all those, I, I just recall being on the campaign trail and having lots of people on the West Side of Longmont really want Dry Creek Community Park to get developed. And every time we don't, we miss the mark and we have that funding gap, there's an innate amount of capacity we have for bonding in our community as well. And I remember past presentations from your department and the Parks Division saying that, you know, we don't have the capacity to bond, to go to the voters for, for building that park. And yet it seems like we continually look at ways to short-change the greater community.
And, and again, I, it's late, but what we have identified is that there is a gap on all these that have an A, whether it's 1A, 2A, 3A. And what we are suggesting is that through the community process, in the master planning process, that a, a really sort of thorough and robust community discussion be held around that very issue. Longmont, ask community, how do you want to address that? Are you prepared as members of the community to send more money to, to make it happen? Or are you wanting to look at sort of both sides of the equation? Tonight, we don't have that answer for you. All we're saying is that we believe that to be an appropriate community process to go through, so that we're certainly not intending to short-change anything. We're, we're simply trying to put in a differentiation on different types of housing units.
And I, I guess I'd like to know how many, how, what this would, how many projects we have, and this is not your department's economic development, to look at how many projects are in the pipeline and, you know, how much this would affect everything and then looking at the future. I mean, frankly, it's, it's a little bit, I don't know, I, I think that there's a lot of implicit assumptions of what we heard at Public invited to be heard too, that I don't think square up with that housing analysis report either. And until we get the rest of the evidence from the Affordable Housing Task Force, you know, they're going to be the ones who come up with, you know, this is what we need for housing, housing options, not just. That report also covered attracting people to the community and the assumption was most of the people who live elsewhere and have higher rents or, or the rents in Longmont are higher aren't inclined to move here anyway.
What, what I remember at our retreat was one of the reasons why we wanted to look at this is we felt that there may be a market shortage of, you know, good, high-end rentals and that's one of the reasons we tried to figure out why that was and it's because developers aren't building projects anymore and the reason why is they can't, they're not making a lot of money and working on small margins and, you know, this, this is why we had this discussion to begin with, so, I mean, I think, I mean, that's kind of what I remember from the retreat.
So Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor. I think we understand what Councilmember Levinson's coming from. Regional park comparison, regional park fee comparison. Longmont is at $5,253. That's for both, that's current?
Correct, yes.
For single-family and multi-family?
Correct.
Okay. The next highest is Fort Collins at 4527. The average out of every city, now some of these are smaller cities and I got chastised about having the highest, using the highest and the smallest, however, the hot, the average is $2,300. We're at 52. No wonder we can't, there hasn't been a multi-family complex built in the last 10 years in Longmont. We're too darn high. So, you know, the information's there, you know, asking for more information, more information, information's right there. You just got to be able to get to it and understand it. I have a question. You guys recommended 2A and 3A. At the bottom of the interim, on your, the next one, that one. Please explain the difference between 2A and 3A as far as, I, I understand that we, Parks and Recreation Board recommended the 2A, reduces the park acre, uh, community park acreage to four instead of 4.5, which we're currently at. 3A goes to three, but if you also look at the very bottom, the funding gap is $25 million for 2A and the funding gap for 3A is only $7 million. Talk to me about that.
Um, Mayor, Councilmembers, the differences come because of the change in the acreages for the community park going from four to three. So you have a change from, if you go down the big difference in two, from 2A to 3A, one of the differences, we still have 26 acres to purchase for option 2A that you don't have in 3A. Then you have community acre, community park acres to develop, you have 102A, which you only have 75 in 3A, so then when you start multiplying the math, that's how you come up with that.
Sure.
When 2A is more expensive than 3A.
But we're not getting anything coming in, nothing times zero is still zero. So my inclination is, you know, looking at, go ahead Dale, I mean, I'm going to say it, my, my inclination is go with 3A, I mean, it's a smaller funding gap. Um, you know, if we're going, you know, 2A, you raise, we raised the single-family detached fee to $5,300, why would we penalize?
Um, Mayor Combs and, and Mayor Protem Santos in City Council, so staff is between 2A and 3A.
Right.
Um, I guess personally, when I step back from it, I don't think we're, we're seeing as much of a issue on the single-family detached as we are in multi-family with regards to the city's overall competitiveness. If you look at where Longmont stands, when you look at our water fees and our sewer fees and everything else, we're either number one or two. It's really this, I, I believe, the park fee in particular and almost uniquely to this multi-family issue that's making it more difficult for us. So with that all said, all we were trying to say in 2A is it's sort of a status quo with regards to single-family detached residential and it, it's, it's about a half for the multi-family. Again, that this could be nuanced and slightly adjusted as you complete your, the park master plan. You know, it is a pretty significant difference between four acres of community park for a thousand people and three. You know, if you just look at four and three, that's only one, it's not a big deal, but it's for a thousand people. And what that would mean is, for instance, at four, it would mean not doing a, a particular one park maybe, maybe not doing a ties park that we haven't bought yet and that kind of stuff. If you go further down to three, then that would likely mean as a community that we would not only not do a ties, but we would not build out all the other parks, like the Sisters Park, complete build out of Sandstone, complete build out at Dry Creek. And so if I had to lean at this interim time, I'd probably stay with the parks board at about 2A, knowing that, again, pretty much status quo for single-family, hopefully puts into play a, a differential for the multi-family. Again, then with the community trying to decide, the community might come up and say, we don't want to figure out, we don't want to try to fund 25 million. The community might help us figure out three and a half instead of four, something like that. That's the kind of nuance that I'm thinking should come out of that bigger, more comprehensive process.
And if I can add to this question, I think one of the things that we have to be cognizant of when we look at these numbers and frankly, now that we're talking about budget, is the big issue that's looming out on the horizon for us is the O and M expenses associated with this, because that's fundamentally another cost that, that's going to come into play. And, and so as, as we look at the budget and we look at the growth of revenues and you have to then look at where expenses are going and how this comes into play in that discussion, that's going to be another factor that when we go through the master plan that, that's going to be injected in this, because it, it's this cost and it's the cost of the O and M that we're going to have to absorb with this, because in a lot of time, in most cases, the capital side of the discussion's very easy. The hard discussion comes in on the O and M.
Sure.
And, and so that's another variable that's going to come in in the master planning discussion.
I've heard years of always O and M, it's always about the O and M. But it, it is, would it be fair to say that 4.5 acres was kind of pie in the sky?
Um, Mayor, Councilmembers, that four and a half acres was decided on in 2001. Prior to that, the, the standard for the city was four acres, so, and that's why when you look at the today options, it's a little odd, because even though it's four and a half acres, but the timing of when it was implemented, that full four and a half acres, the extra half acre isn't in the park fee because it's not fair to charge everything, anything that's backlog into the future of the few remaining developments. So, I mean, it would be, I mean, even with that, if we left it at four and a half and how, and didn't change, make any changes, we still have a $25 million gap because of it's not all, because all of it's not in the park fee. So, you know, there will be a need to identify additional funding sources or find some other alternative in developing our parks as far as different policies.
And part of it is, is that, again, our, our fees is too high compared to taking the market that we're in, we're at the high end. When you add 200-plus units, whether it's A, B, C, or D, if there's a D, type of apartments, it's still 50, almost $5,300 worth of, of investment. It's, it's quite a bit of money. And I did hear recently at a, at a, gosh, I want to say, oh, the LAEC luncheon, I, I heard discussion that realtors are looking, I mean, there's not, you know, they're looking for single-family. Apparently that we, I don't think we're out of stock, but I mean, they're looking, they're looking to be able to market, you know, resale of a house to new housing. I, I would be okay with 3A to be able to spur some of that on, so, love to hear what everyone else has to say finally.
Councilmembers, Samori?
Thank you, Mayor Combs. I think Harold kind of hit it on the head. The biggest issue is the maintenance. I mean, I don't think we have enough funds to even maintain the parks that we have in existence. So to argue over what we're going to charge for new parks is moot because whatever money we raise probably going to go to maintain the existing ones and not necessarily build new ones. So we need to address probably that problem first and then worry about what we're going to charge for new development. Have we taken into consideration, I think we have a requirement when developers build, they have to have a pocket park that they build for the community? Have we taken into consideration the cost of those pocket parks that they have to build and maintain when we're deciding what we want to charge them for the bigger parks?
Um, Mayor and Councilmembers, no, at this point, it is not incorporated into this, into this calculation and Joyce here can explain it if you would.
Well, I mean, shouldn't we be looking at it because it is a real cost to the developer? So we, we ask them to build the park and maintain it and then they have to pay to build additional parks that may or may not be near their development. So shouldn't that be cost be taken into consideration when we're deciding what to charge them?
Mayor and Councilmembers, Samori, um, yes, and that's one of the things we actually have our consultant looking at because a lot of other communities do take it into account and have different formulas. So we are evaluating that and we will be bringing it back to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board as well as Council.
So it might behoove us as a group to wait and see what the final numbers might be, but I think what we need to understand is where, what is the cost of maintaining the parks that we have currently? How much money do we need to keep them in good enough shape for people to enjoy for the next 20, 30 years? How much money do we need? And where is that money going to come from? I think we're putting the cart in front of the horse personally.
Do you want an answer to that question? Okay. So I think there are a number of variables that come into play. I think fundamentally, it's dependent on what we're going to build. And so there, there is a connection to this discussion because if you look at the cost of maintaining four and a half acres versus four versus three, there's, there's the delta. And so it's going to drop that, that O and M cost accordingly based on the cost per acre that we have and what we have to maintain. You can see the slide there. The, the other thing that really comes into play is also what we're doing in order to be better at what we're doing and, and how do we look at our operations and how do we work to fundamentally become more effective and more efficient? Because at the same time, we say that the O and M's Because at the same time, we say that the O and M's going to be a significant cost, we're also going through some evaluations on what we do and how we do it to help reduce that cost. And so that's going to be an ongoing initiative. So frankly, there are a lot of variables that we can throw out to say, this is what it's going to cost in the future. And some of those are basic, it's fuel cost. You know, that's a big component of that operation. And so the numbers we are using, again, I would caution and say it's a projection, and it can vary a little bit, but if you look at this slide.
Yeah, council members, this is a quick rough estimate of operation maintenance costs based on how we currently have operation maintenance budgeted, which is right now a $3.1 million annual fee, and that doesn't include the renewal costs. So we know these are probably low, but wanted to give you an estimate of the impact. So if you look at the changes, basically, you're looking from the cheapest being option four, which would be an addition of $425,000, all the way up to $840,000 for option one. And that's just the annual O and M. And then if you look at addition of renewal costs, which we're faced with now, it goes from the highest of about $1.41 million down to about $650,000 from option four. And that is in today's dollars, if we haven't projected that out. That was just to kind of give you an idea of the change, the increase in costs for the different acreages.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Can you go back one slide?
Please.
I kind of like option one. I'm just kidding, I just wanted to see, it's late, I just think he was falling asleep back there, I just wanted to wake him up. My thoughts on this are, I don't think we're, going back to something you said earlier, Councilmember Levison, I don't think we're, it's a question of shortchanging certain neighborhoods out of their parks. I think the question is, who's going to pay for it? I mean, I wish everybody could have a park, a big two-acre park all to themselves, but the reality is, who's going to pay for it? And are we going to make the developer? Are we going to make, I mean, where's it going to come from? And the question as far as where does data, I mean, where's the data? I might just look at the market. If people aren't voting with their dollar to build, what that's telling me is that it's just the data, I mean, that's enough data to say it's too expensive, we got to do something. At the same time, I also think that I've had several conversations recently with my wife as we're driving places, and she said, you better not do away with our parks. And a lot of people love our parks, love our trails, but then again, I think it's what attracts people to Longmont, LAEC, you know, their plan and part of their campaign that they're going to be doing is attracting people to the outdoor, you know, hiking parks, access to mountain trails. So cutting that off, I am reluctant to do. However, how do we maintain them? How do we pay for them? I want a lot of parks, but can we afford a lot of parks? And so when I look at the difference between option 2A, my heart says, let's vote with 2A, but my pocketbook and my brain says, I think that the more practical solution would be 3A. Because as has already been pointed out, by reducing it from 4.5, not just to four, but 4.5 to three, I mean, that's 25% less approximately in O and M fees that we're going to have to come up with. And we can always change it in the future if we come up with a lot of money. And we're not going to bet on it, right? It's a study session, so we have a week to think about it, more or less, you know? And so, I mean, the direction, I mean, I guess I'd move that we give city staff the direction that we actually go with option 3A, as much as it hurts.
You know, I kind of like option three, just because it's fully funded, it doesn't have a budget gap. It still does significantly cut down the multifamily fee, and I think on the single family dwelling, it's not going to, it's not that much of a change in what we already have. Now, going to three acres, you know, does have the advantage that the O and M cost is lower, and we do have a ton of acreage associated with our Greenway that's really a park, it's like a continuous park that's not even entered as part of this, is that correct? So that's where we get, to me, that's the real beneficial park, is that's a park that goes, you know, basically from Airport Road to Sandstone Ranch and back. So I don't think that we need to maintain, you know, a four and a half acre park, and I'm, you know, I, you know, obviously, if $5,000 per door was reasonable for multifamily dwellings, we'd probably be building those things, and we wouldn't need to meet that market need that's not being met now. So, you know, the market's driving this decision, not, we're just responding to it, I think. So, you know, I'll bear with the flow, I'm happy with 3, 3A. You know, we could decide on 2A tonight and defer the decision, but that's kind of like all over the place, but, you know, I guess I'm personally a little bit more in favor of 3 over 3A.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. You know, I like being number one, but I don't like being number one in the highest park fee in the area. And we do need apartments to be built, and we do need to reduce that fee. And I want to see some apartments being built, I want to see some dirt be turned, and I would go with Councilmember Bagley's suggestion of 3A. I believe you made a formal motion, isn't that correct?
Yeah.
And you, it's seconded. I call the question.
I think, you know, we called it, it's called.
Okay, we got a vote.
Okay, that passes five to two with Councilmember Levison and Mayor Coombs dissenting.
One other thing that I'd like to bring up, and I got two calls this week from, that's related to this. Part of the reason I wanted 3A was because it also reduced the single family residential. And people have bought lots in Longmont, but it's not just the developers. The two calls I got were from families who were like, well, we can't come up with the 30 grand to meet the city's fees. And so I guess what I'd like, I mean, I guess I could call at a decent hour and just request information. Would it be possible to get like a one-page or two-page write-up to the, as to the fees that someone has to buy when they've got a vacant land, when they want to build a home or apartment buildings? Would that be possible?
We can definitely do that and get that to you. I think it's been, I think we have it, and so, yeah.
Okay, thanks.
We can do that.
Councilmember Santos.
Kim, don't leave, I have a question. So when would, when do we see this again?
Mayor, council members, we were thinking that we would try to bring back an ordinance for council to review on October 9.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Levison.
Yes, and when you bring that ordinance back, I want to know how many things we have in the pipeline that this would affect, and whether or not it, you know, what's the effective date? You know, are we going to turn around and grandfather something that's already started? You know, what are we looking at as far as the impact? And if we're going to change the standard, don't we need to have something else in the ordinance that, you know, we're changing the standard of what we're doing for parks? What we're requiring? So is that part of the comp plan, though?
Mayor, council members, yeah, the standard is actually in the comp plan. I guess the direction we were asking, that's why we were in the scenarios, we didn't write we're changing the standard. Right now, we were just saying we were looking at acreage, and then when we, as we go through the Parks Master Plan, if there was a desire to actually change the acreage, or the standard, then we would, staff would pursue that, which is a different procedure as well.
So I guess I don't understand the difference.
I guess I would defer to Eugene if he could.
Or we can just talk about it tomorrow, Eugene, if you want, that's why I understand, just get light for people. Yeah.
Yes, we can get that information included in that.
Mayor, your next item is Twin Peaks Mall redevelopment project update presented by Brad Gower.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. We will try to be setting a land speed record for this one. Alan Ginsborg and his team at New Mark Merrill have been spending the last few months visiting with members of the community and sharing information from their perspective about their role in the redevelopment of Twin Peaks Mall. We thought it would be an opportune tonight, opportune time tonight to update you on some of the city and urban renewal authority responsibilities that will be upcoming related to the redevelopment of the project. And so I will rejoin you in a few minutes, but for now, I'm going to turn it over to
Good morning, or almost, members of council. I'll just kind of quickly go through an update in terms of the mall redevelopment and status and where we're at, and what some upcoming items will be coming to you guys in the next month or two. So as Brad is aware, here we've, Alan and his team have presented to the community in terms of some of the initial concepts of what the redevelopment will look like. And to update you, what we're looking at is approximately $80 million redevelopment. And as Alan has mentioned in some of his community meetings, the mall will essentially be torn down except for dillards, and will be replaced with a kind of an open style lifestyle center with a village in the center. The redevelopment will include a variety of new retail formats, new destination-type retailers, large anchor stores, small retail stores, as well as a new movie theater. It'll also include a plaza kind of village located off of Hoover Road that will likely incorporate local and regional retailers, including restaurants and other types of entertainment. The project's schedule is looking to start demolition in early 2013, with the project opening later in 2014. So in terms of the public-private partnership, one of the key aspects of this entire redevelopment is the Twin Peaks Urban Renewal Plan. Yours have coming forth shortly, a upcoming modification to the original plan. The original plan was adopted back in 2009, but it didn't include a couple of key provisions. One is the authorization of tax increment financing, which is a key piece of this whole redevelopment in terms of financing infrastructure. And the second piece is the potential use of eminent domain but related to non-fee interests with respect to certain projects or properties within this area, and it's to help to facilitate the redevelopment and get it going. The Urban Renewal Plan also includes two old pieces. One is an updated blight study, which is a necessary part of the Colorado Urban Renewal Statute in terms of the determination of blight and use of tax increment financing to help eradicate and remediate blighting conditions in the area. And the second piece is the Berta County Impact Report. The Berta County Impact Report is essentially a document that quantifies what the tax impacts of new redevelopment will be, and those impacts to the various taxing entities, including the city, county, score district, and water districts. And then October 9 is what we're slated for the first reading of this updated Urban Renewal Plan, and with the second reading and public hearing scheduled for October So just kind of a quick primer on tax increment financing. It's a common financing mechanism that's used by a variety of different communities along the Front Range and throughout the US to facilitate reinvestment and redevelopment. It's basically directing the incremental property taxes and sales taxes to the project within a defined tax increment area that can be used to finance a variety of infrastructure costs, such as demolition, utilities, planning costs, land acquisition, and other improvements that serve a public purpose. So it's important note that tax increment financing is not a tax increase, it's simply reallocation of the incremental property and sales taxes generated from the project itself back into the project area. And the general TIF statute has a 25-year maximum, or until the bonds are paid off, if bonds are issued. And also, there's an established base that is, that once the Urban Renewal Plan is adopted in October, the, assuming you got to move forward, the base of the property tax and the sales tax is from the 2012 year. So those will continue to flow to the taxing entities. So they'll continue to get the base, the increment will go as to, as part of the TIF, and then after the TIF period is over, that redevelopment and the improved value generated from the project will flow back to those taxing entities as well. So with that, I'll have Brad give a quick update on the other piece of the project.
Thanks, David. I just wanted to say a few brief words on the considerations related to potential use of eminent domain on the parcel for the project. You're very familiar with the fact that last month, the city council approved an ordinance that granted the ability to use eminent domain if it absolutely proves necessary to enable the project to go forward on so-called non-fee interests on the site. So that would relate to things like fee leases or other agreements between the developer and certain retailers that guide the operations of the shopping center. If that proves intractable to enable the project to go forward, and we've been given the charge from you to assume that this is a very high priority of the city and the community, and that we need to get it done. And so one of the things that we have done in terms of the next step related to this possible consideration is we have engaged council, specialized council on eminent domain law, to advise us on some considerations for moving forward in relation to two specific retailers on the site. We are still encouraging New Mark Merrill and the other entities on the site to work this out, and to come to some agreements that do not involve the use of eminent domain or the involvement of the Longmont Urban Renewal Authority, and we will still try to do that until the very last time that the you as acting as the urban renewal authority would direct us to do otherwise. So I just wanted to give you a brief update that we are working with an eminent domain council to take the necessary steps to prepare the way if that occurrence needs to happen in terms of going forward with the project. The last thing I will say is, I don't know if you have any questions for him, but Alan is here, obviously, and he stuck through us, stuck through with us the entire evening, so if you have any questions for Alan, he is available. And that concludes what we have to say, by the way.
Don't see any questions, so thank you, Brad, and thank you, Alan.
It is a great project.
Mayor, final item this evening is the Otto Way Open Space Acquisition, and this will also be presented by Kim Sugar.
Good evening, Kim Sugar, Natural Resources Manager. I'm sure we can get the presentation. The city is proposing to acquire approximately 2.25 acres from the Otto Way family for about $10,000. The property is located north of Rogers Grove District Park and south of Third Avenue. It's highlighted in turquoise. The property is divided by the railroad. North of the railroad is about .58 acres, and south of the railroad is about 1.67 acres. And the purpose is to preserve the St. Rain Creek. It's an area where we need to do restoration on the banks to stabilize it. And this acquisition is being structured similar to our Collins acquisition, where the city will be annexing and deeding back the house. And so we are looking for direction from council whether to proceed.
Councilmember Santos.
Just one question, the money's coming from?
Open space.
That's just what I thought. I would move that we direct staff to pursue this acquisition.
Passes seven to zero.
That's it, huh?
Time for council comments. Councilmember Samori.
No comments, Mayor.
I call the question.
Councilmember Kinley.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I have to do my business of the week, which is Guaranty Bank, which has been, that bank has been there at Fourth and Main Street for a long, long time, and every time I go in there, it's like, even though it's in there, it's like, even though it's been bought up by a bigger bank, it still feels like my hometown bank. So my business this week is Guaranty Bank. They support a lot of nonprofits, put a lot of their officers on boards, and they've been an asset to the community.
Councilmember Levison?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to report back, the mayor and I attended the Colorado Municipal League District meeting last week in Boulder at NPAR, and just got a little bit of additional information from CML. I don't know if we got, I didn't really get the PowerPoint, but we can always have the PowerPoint forwarded to you. And also wanted to note that the Boulder City Council had adopted a resolution supporting Longmont's position on our lawsuit, and there are also, some of those members, individuals are circulating a letter to other elected officials to send to the government with support from elected officials across the state. So, that's all.
Well, I remember giving the proclamation to test your house for radon, and so I took that seriously and found out I had a radon problem, and then several other members in our neighborhood started doing the same thing, and I actually bought a meter, same thing you can check out from the library, from Brian Hampson, and he's let me loan it, but it's gone to sell at different houses, and so it's been really useful. So I would like to remind people, you know, that this, we're in a high radon area, and even if your house was fine 10 years ago, you could have minor cracks in your basement floor, and, but anyway, I think it's something worthwhile, since you can check out a meter from the library, they're not 100% accurate, but they're, they tend to read about 20% higher. But I will tell you, if you definitely have a problem, and then you can check with a more accurate carbon filter that you can get at Home Depot or Ace Hardware or whatever. Anyway, please check your homes for radon if you have any concerns, thank you. City manager in hot.
No comments, Mayor, Council.
The attorney, no comments.
No comments, Mayor.
Means adjourned.